Okay, I would like to call agenda the Monday July eighth, two thousand nineteen Board of Selectment meeting. Can we stay in Fort Regent?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You'll turn your mic on.
Okay, we have no resident comments. Kathy, do you want to read the approved warrant?
Sure, so payroll warrant nineteen dash fifty-three for one hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Payroll warrant twenty dash oh-one for fifty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Bill warrant nineteen dash fifty-three for one hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and nineteen cents.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Bill warrant nineteen dash fifty-three dash two for twenty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, it's not noted. What's that for?
That's just payroll withholdings. That was all the final June thirtieth withholdings.
Thank you. All in favor?
Bill warrant twenty dash zero-zero for one million one hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Bill warrant twenty dash zero-one for thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, moving on, we have the minutes to approve.
There were no minutes.
That's what I was gonna say, I didn't have any. It was blank.
Appointments, we have the appointment of Colin Stokes of Seven Cannon Hill Extension, Road Extension, Groveland to the position of the Water and Sewer Superintendent effective July twelfth, two thousand nineteen. This forty-hour week, hour week, except the position has a starting salary of seventy-eight thousand. And I see Colin's in front of us in the board. Does anyone wanna have anything to say?
So if I can quickly, I'm sorry, if I can just quickly take you through the process a little bit. So the position was posted. We received, I think, eight or nine resumes. Jim Sheehan, the Chairman of the Water and Sewer Commissioner, and I held interviews on all the candidates. We narrowed it down to two and presented them to the full Water and Sewer Commission, and in fact, they recommended Colin. Jim and I met with him. You'll see the letter that's in there and the terms that were discussed and negotiated upon, and a provisional offer was extended pursuant to this board ratifying it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, look, he looked over his paperwork. He's really done a great job as far as getting all the certification and stuff. I think he'll, I think he'll do a good job, and hopefully he'd be an upgrade. Now, you're gonna lose money at this with overtime?
I hope not.
But you're not sure.
No, you're not.
I'll move for passage.
Mike wants to say something.
Yeah, I was reading through your information, and did I see that you are also involved in rebuilding a building on School Street? What part of that were you involved in? I know that it's still ongoing.
What? You have to go to the podium if you don't mind, and just say your name and then...
Colin Stokes. I have a pretty good background in construction. You know, I've been involved in it as far as dismantling stuff. Giving advice for how I think things should be happening. Steps to take, steps not to take.
So you'll be in charge of finishing that project, I'm assuming, then?
Uh, I mean, along with the Ford, I would imagine.
All right, 'cause I mean, it looks great compared to what it had been in the past, but it did hit kind of a stall.
Yeah, it would've kind of been a holding pattern.
Right, for obvious reasons.
Yeah, with no one really driving the ship.
Right, but I just wanna make sure that that's a priority to get that done, because I know you guys wanna move out of this facility. That'll free up space here for other storage and some other things that we need to take care of, too. But yeah, I mean, that project's been going along great. It's been cleaned up. It looks a lot better, just to make sure that that gets done. Doesn't mean that I'm halfway pointing for another six or eight months.
Yeah, no, we're not looking to have it sit like it is.
Good, okay, that was my only concern.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple. You still the owner and operator of Colin Stokes and Sun Construction Snow Removal?
Uh, not so much on the snow removal. I sold my plow truck, but I do small construction projects here and there.
That take away from your duties here?
No, the other half of my company is a five-year-old, so not a whole lot of work happening.
I know him probably. And you're presently a volunteer, a firefight fireman as well in town. Do you see any conflicts in that?
No, Jim and Denise and I talked about that, and, you know, job is, job comes first, and then, you know, fire department comes second.
Okay, good.
I'm good.
Yeah, I see that he has his construction supervisor license, so that's gonna be a big help.
Yeah, I actually took the class through NECO and passed the state test, so.
Okay, you good, Kathy, right now?
Um, yeah, just had a couple of questions. First, I'm glad to see, see this applicant here. I think that he will bring some new ideas to the job, and I think that's what we've been looking for. I'm wondering, kind of more from the Water and Sewer Board, do we provide funding for continuing education or seminars or anything that he may wish to attend? Do we provide for that?
Jim Sheehan, Jim and one of our presidents, yes, we do.
Okay, and my other question was, he's salaried, correct?
Correct.
So I'm wondering, it said punch a time card. Am I misunderstanding something in all this paperwork? I just wanna make sure I understand.
Okay, so, uh, past superintendent was, uh... He was in a variety of different places. We like a starting point for the superintendent on a daily basis, so that's the only reason that he meets are previously meets the night before, but sees the crew in the morning and has a direction of the day's events or the week's events. That's the only stipulation.
Okay, and is this a probationary condition or a permanent?
Actually, the first part of if you, if you read how we structured it is certainly probational.
Okay.
We had, we had candidates that stemmed from big cities to our own people. We decided to, it was the town's best effort to hire somebody from within, so we did that. And Colin has some, um, slight restrictions on his ability for budgeting and so forth. So we started off as a step program. We need six months, and then if that all works out, we certainly move right on into the full position, full pay.
Good, and so do you anticipate that he will be attending some continuing education this first year with us?
We do.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, number one, I think that, you know, Colin obviously would be the right guy to move up in. Like you just said, the continuing education for the budget and the things and what have you, I think that would be obviously a help. I think it's in his best interest for the six months so he can move on. So that being said, I think we're good. As far as the building goes, what selectmen would just said, are we gonna be on now that July first is here? Are we gonna be able to move forward with that project? I mean, we got the money and we can, is the money in your budget, or is it gonna sit there for a few more months?
Unfortunately, I'll be able to get back to you in less than thirty days, I would think, just to tell you exactly where we are. Unfortunately, losing our last superintendent was the spearhead of the whole thing, so we're certainly behind the curve.
Right. What's happened is, there's a lot of criticism from the town people saying that, you know, you gotta, we appropriated money at town meeting. They were in the impression the building was gonna get done. It didn't get done. So now it's kinda like everyone's asking questions. Why is it sitting empty? What's going on? It's boarded up, you know what I mean? So it's kind of getting to be a little bit of an embarrassment, and I think we owe it to the town people to at least give them what's going on.
I completely agree. Embarrass them not, but timely fashion needs to be moved forward.
Right. Okay.
But I think we're ninety percent by our guess of where we are. Windows would be a big deal. So we're close.
Okay.
Um, Bill, just, this is more of a follow-up comment, 'cause this is not on the topic of appointing Colin. I was hoping at the end of the agenda, when we're setting next week, that we could, not next week, the next meeting agenda, that we could meet, as we discussed, at five-thirty and perhaps get a tour of this building. Nothing like seeing it for real, and maybe if you, I don't know how early you get home on a Monday.
I'm sure we're gonna raise that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm good, thank you, and thank you for stepping up. Okay, so, um, do we get a vote?
I'll make a motion to appoint Colin Stokes.
Second.
Okay.
Water and Sewer Superintendent effective July twelfth.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Wait, thank you, congratulations. Okay, moving on the list, we have the appointment of Caitlin Gilfoyle of Four Cannon Hill Road Extension, Groveland, to the Rec Committee through July thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And I know I see Caitlin here.
I'll make a motion to appoint her for just, if someone's on wants to second that.
And anyone second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm just wondering if this will fill the committee, or?
No.
Nope?
Okay.
One more step.
That's my question. We only have three now people on, uh, actually, three on the committee with Caitlin. Is, is now an appropriate time maybe to reevaluate the recreation committee's goals, mission?
Well...
Readjust, reset? I don't know if...
Well, so if I may just, all right, so after tonight's appointment, the plan is to put out a press release and try and get all of the vacancies filled. We have several on the boards and committees. I would say, depending on what type of interest, you could certainly have some of those. Just we definitely need members in order to have continued meetings and quorums.
And how many members are required for the rec?
I believe it's a seven-member, let me just double check.
So, what Bill just said, we can still appoint what have you, but can we, in our next agenda, maybe have, come up with a, what we expect the committee to do? 'Cause I know in the past, a lot of the pines topics was had, they don't wanna, didn't wanna get involved in a lot of things down there, what have you. So why don't we, if we can, come up with a, a charge, I guess?
That's a great idea.
I think that now we have a charge and we have new members, they know what we're looking.
So it is a seven-member committee with three auxiliary members. They currently have not had any auxiliary members, and we did not hear back from the current chair about being reappointed. One member could not continue, and another member we never heard from, so there will definitely be vacancies. Like I said, though, we have quite a few on other boards and committees, so my plan is, once we got through the annual appointments, to really do a push to get some people to volunteer.
Okay.
I think it kind of, maybe it's premature, but maybe the, the rec committee should meet before they come before the Board of Selectmen. And, so they reorganize and...
But do they know their charge? That's the thing.
Right now, you don't have a rec committee.
We don't have a rec committee, we don't have a charge really for them, that's what I'm saying.
Well, with the appointment of Caitlin, they will have a quorum.
Yeah, no, I'm saying we're gonna point.
But she will be the fourth member. They could hold meetings. They would have a quorum.
If I could...
Go ahead.
Are they created in our bylaw, or?
To be honest, I don't know.
So that would be the, I would say, why don't we take a look at that before we decide to give them a charge? Why don't we see what creates the recreation committee, see if there already was a charge? And I, I agree with that. Let them have a meeting and elect a chairman and, and talk a little bit amongst themselves, and I'm interested in their ideas, too. 'Cause I, I have a pretty good idea that we're gonna find there's not a, a really finely tuned charge that tells them they have to do this, this, and this, but, you know, wanna be some... I don't wanna be in a position of telling volunteers what they have to do if they have some ideas of what they think would be good for the town. I would like to hear those ideas.
I agree, yeah, but I just don't think any committee can be just rogue and, and, you know, kind of be anywhere.
I don't think they're rogue yet. They haven't, they haven't had a meeting.
So then, why don't we go ahead, why don't we go ahead and appoint Caitlin?
The committee has been existent for some time.
I understand that. I, I know where you're coming from. I just think, why don't we go one step at a time here and, and see where, what they have in mind as well, that's all.
Okay, so can, do we already give a motion in a second?
Yes.
On mere discussion? So let's, do you have anything you wanna say? Are you good? Okay, all right, so all in favor for Caitlin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin.
So go back, take time, continue the discussion, and we don't have to make her stay. I think what we should do is, if you wanna go that route, and you wanna wait till the committee gets the committee together, and we find out there's a committee, maybe we have them come in before us and we can discuss them, because there's really been no, no, I don't know how to say it.
Interaction.
No interaction, no...
No guidance.
...of asked and what have you, so.
Correct, but I think we should see what, under what conditions they were formed. Were they just appointed from within a selectman meeting with some formal direction given then, or were they created under a bylaw? I just would like to see that before we...
I don't believe it's a bylaw.
I was thinking it's not.
My guess is they were formed by the selectmen, and since I've been here, it's sort of been anything. They oversee girls softball, the intramural basketball program, and then sort of the pines. But as you know, the board has taken back certain projects under the pines. We formed a separate Groveland Day Committee, 'cause they didn't wanna handle that any longer. So I do think their charge has changed. Now that we've removed some of the pines components, I don't know what they will do as a committee other than softball and basketball. So I think it is helpful to have a conversation amongst yourselves and with them to find out what their goals are, what the town's goals are with the recreation committee.
Right, but you could also...
Because it's changed over the last few years.
Right, we can have the conversation with them, but you also have, if you had the right committee, like we discussed before, you still have Groveland Day, you still have Pumpkin Fest. A lot of these things that that committee could be involved in, it could be broader, it could be maybe raising some money, or having a hat show, music. I mean, there's a million different things they can do if you had the right committee, so I guess we'll just wait and see what they do, and then we'll go from there.
Well...
That would be my next question. How long do we wait? Is there a time, is there, is there an end date to this game, or is it, is it open-ended?
If I could, I think we should take a look at what the descriptions are that other towns are using for similar, parallel type of committees. I'm not, I'd like to see a list of the River Pines tasks that we have taken back, 'cause I, it's, I've been trying to play catch-up here, as you know, and, and I know you, most of you have been, all of you have been out for two terms, so I, I did create kind of a project list, trying to figure out where you're going with all different things. And so, for me, as a new member, and maybe for them as well, it'd be very helpful to know what the Board of Selectmen has taken on that the recreation committee in the past used to do. I don't know these things. I don't know these things.
One's a few things, I guess. One is the irrigation, one is the fields.
So when you, so you're saying...
Well, the fields, I think, the irrigation...
I'm not understanding, we, we're not running the irrigation. What do you mean, the irrigation? Wasn't that like, if it was like a special project where the Board of Selectmen took it on to get it done, then it's done. If it's a special project that's still, I, I'm gonna let you all see what I, I shared with Denise, that I've put together kind of a list of all the special projects that I've heard you all mentioning, 'cause I'm trying to like keep track, you know, and catch up with where you guys are. So if that's like an ongoing special project, that'll be completed at some point, and then we have nothing more to do on it, fine. But if it's something that, as, as a Board of Selectmen, we're gonna be meeting on, on a routine basis as part of our regular select board meeting, like we do to manage appointments and things like that, then that I would wanna know, as, that's our duty.
Yeah, and part of it is, is just our general oversight.
Well, we overs, we have oversight of the whole town, so, you know. That I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to...
But the pines is part of the town as well, so...
Yes, and, yes, in fact, I drove down there to see if the bathrooms are open and stopped in to ask. I understand all that part. I guess what I'm looking for is, is there any function or operation down at the River Pines that we are handling on a routine basis? It's not a project, it's not something that it's gonna come, get done and be done, and we hand it over to somebody else to...
It's nothing that we're doing, mostly the leaders.
When you say "we," it's not the board.
I'm just taking credit, Denise, come on.
And the question, and the better question may be, what's not getting done that should be getting done that nobody's handling?
That's a very good question.
So, do you wanna go through a couple of quick ones real quick, or do you rather not get into it?
I think it should be on the agenda if you're gonna continue to discuss it personally.
If you would be open, I would, could share to Denise this special project list I started, and granted, feel free, like you did with my other list, to do what you want with it. But I was just trying to see who was the point person and what we had agreed to do on it.
Okay.
And maybe that would be a good starting point.
It might be a nice idea if we hear from a committee, some of the projects that, that they have, they wanna take over. It may be that some of the duties that the selectmen took back, maybe, maybe they'll have an idea on that they wanna do, or they wanna run it themselves, so...
I don't know if too many that the selectmen took back, that's what I'm, I'm getting confused about.
Well, all right, one phrase of words. They, some of the duties that the recreation committee had done in the past, the impetus fell on the Board of Selectmen, they, they did some of that, that work. So let's, let's hear from the, from the committee in a meeting and get their ideas, and, and we can go from there.
Okay. All right, so we're, we're moving on. We took care of Caitlin, we're moving on, right?
Is there, again, is there an end date?
I can't give an end date till we get a committee.
Well, we have a committee and we have a quorum.
Okay, so we have four members, Denise?
Now you do, yes.
Okay, so we have four members.
Well, when you do the next item to annual appointments, because there are...
On this list here, the yeses.
Yes, there is another yes, so he will make your...
So if you wanna give it, they're gonna need time to meet. They're gonna need to find a chairman. They're gonna have to get, before they can meet, they gotta find someone to call the meeting together. So it's gonna be not till like, like Mike said, the first, first of the middle of September where we can discuss it again.
But that, that'd be, I think that will give us time, at least for me, I'm being selfish here, to let, to get your input on this project list, so I can understand what our problem is.
So why don't we give it till the first of September, and we'll see what we hear. I'll keep, you keep your ears and eyes, and I'll keep my ears and eyes open.
As long as I have a date that I can look at and say, you know, here it is.
Okay, we'll shoot for the first of September.
And what I can do tomorrow is email the four members of the committee and let them know that, that first meeting, to invite them into here, to meet with you all.
Okay. All right, okay, moving on, we got discussion and possible vote. We got the annual appointments of, continued from the previous meeting.
And I have one amendment to make. Carl Judson, although we didn't hear from him, he came in to be sworn in, so we're assuming he'd like to continue on the committee. So if you could kindly change that to a yes.
Just one way to say yes. Just show up at the town clerk.
Looking at this, the chairman of the recreation committee hasn't indicated whether he wants to stay on or not. Didn't answer yes or no. He's a, he's a big part of that recreation committee, he has a lot of knowledge of what, what goes on there. Maybe we could do a phone call to him and see if we can't ask him to stay on at least another year, unless, unless somebody's heard from him that he...
Didn't we just send all these out again?
Several times, and I actually heard from other members that he was intentionally not replying. I don't know if that's accurate.
I think we've done due diligence. Someone can always come forward to us if, if a committee has...
But they just, since last meeting, we asked to have this sent again, it's been sent again.
And it was refor, the original email was reforwarded to everyone, so they saw that they got the first one and then the second one.
Okay, so can we go ahead and approve, approve the yeses, or do you wanna do them all individually?
I would do, move all the yeses for appointment to the respective committees.
So can I get a motion to approve all the yeses?
I did. I said I move all the...
Okay, second it?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
My word, Senator, I'll need to abstain.
Okay. So, you get all the hands?
Yes.
Okay.
So can I go yes on everybody but Mrs. Jean O'Neill and abstain on that one?
You can, or you could just abstain.
Okay.
All right, so moving on, we have Beth Cuniff, town clerk, to discuss the new voting machines. I see Beth is here.
Not gonna wheel it inside for us to see? We don't have it yet.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
At the prior town meeting, the town approved to purchase the new Immacast, well, they approved to purchase new voting machines. And the ones that we've taken a look at and have requested to purchase are the Immacast precinct machines, from the same company that we've bought them before. The AccuVote was also an LHS company, and this is an LHS company machine.
Okay.
The older machines, the AccuVote, are out of date. They no longer make any of the parts for the machines, so part of our issue will be that if anything breaks down, they will be taking parts from old machines in order to repair them. The other issue is the batteries. If we have an issue with the battery and the battery goes down, we lose everything, and that would compromise the, the vote. And then, lastly, the software is run by Windows XP, which has not been supported by Microsoft for quite a while. And it could be, there are concerns for crashes or bugs on the software system on the old machines. So the new machines are, we had a presentation in the beginning of June. They are exceptionally accurate. Their setup is easy, their security is excellent, and they're very efficient. Some, one of the drawbacks is that they will be slower, so it will take people a little bit to get used to, that when they input their ballot, they need to just stand, wait, take a look, and accept it, and then they can head out the door. There's a screen right on the top of the machine that shows them the ballot when it goes through, whether it's been accepted, and if it hasn't been accepted, what the exact issue is. They can correct it right then and there, and there's no question later as to what the person meant. They can correct it right at that point. If there's, are more issues with it, it will actually spit out the ballot, the person will take that, get a voided ballot, get a new ballot, and be able to re-vote. So there's a lot of, there's no guesswork, and people's requests will be what is actually voted on. Do you have any questions?
Do you know what the new machines are running for California?
I don't think it tells me all this.
And it's, it's interesting that, and I'm assuming because it's doing multiple scans, that it's slower to read the ballots than the older ones. But it's because of being more specific and more similar?
And it actually takes an actual visual of the ballot.
Also, it's scanning the picture, not just the dots?
Yes, right.
Okay, anyone else?
Um, yes, so you're saying that when somebody actually puts their ballot in now, right? Is somebody going to be at that machine looking to see that it's accepted?
Yes.
So a member of the Board of Registros would be at the machine, or whom?
No, we would either have people designated as head poll takers or warden, however we wanna describe it. But they would stay with the machine for the entire voting process, and assist people with answering the question, if there is a question, and verifying that the ballot goes through properly. So similar to what the constables do now, they stand at the machine and they just make sure that everything goes through. The head poll person would actually stay with the machine and make sure that everything is correct.
I didn't realize the constable was standing at the machine to make sure that the ballot was read right, though, and not, he's not there for that purpose, right?
Right, so we would actually need an additional person at each machine to make sure that everything runs through properly.
And this person?
There would not be a registrar. Registros should not be in the voting room at all during an election.
So would this person be someone from the town? I mean, how do you find this person?
It would be volunteers, same as we have people to volunteer and, and check people in and out. This would be an additional volunteer.
And what kind of training would we give to them?
The company will come in and set up a training for everybody that we wanna train, including the people who check off the names, everybody.
And you call them a volunteer, but are we going to pay these people? I would assume no one's gonna stand there all day for free.
Yes, yes, the same as the poll workers, they would be paid.
Okay, so we would need to make sure we had the budget. So, did the company give you an example of a reason why a ballot might get rejected that would have, that would have gone through under the old machine?
It could be anything, from them not circling the right area, from them making a mark in the wrong spot on the ballot, to not answering a question, and maybe they really did want to answer it. It could kick it back to say, are you sure that you didn't vote for anybody in this category?
See, that, I'm a little concerned about that, because that happens a lot, and that's people's choice. They don't have to vote on things they don't want.
And then the person says, yes, that was my choice, and they hit the button, and it goes right through.
But, a lot of people don't vote, I mean, you know where I'm going with this, right? Is this mandated by law that we have to have somebody spitting it back if they don't vote for something? If it's a clear no vote? That, that's my question, maybe I'm putting you too much on the spot, and if I saw, I apologize, but.
Oh, no, don't worry.
Having looked over election results before.
So that would be something I would ask.
Right, because I think that would significantly back up the whole voting process, in addition to, I think, violating someone's privacy on voting. Because now, everybody in the room would know that this person didn't vote on something.
Nobody would know, there's the screen, there's no, there's, there's no good voice.
But they're being held at the machine, and they're asking them, they have to ask them, did you need to vote on number something, right?
No, they can look right on the screen, and, and it says, do you want to verify this? They look right on the machine, and then they can verify it.
It's written on the, it's written on the machine, so you just hit yes or no.
Right, so the person monitoring it knows it, and the person looking at it knows it, and, I don't know, I just feel like, you know, it's your right to go in, vote where you want, and not vote where you don't want. I understand maybe if there's something wrong with how the vote was colored in, but if there's no vote whatsoever, and it's going to just keep checking to make sure you just, that, you know, this is what you intended, personally, I would not like that as a voter.
I will verify that that is one of the things that the machine checks.
And just a clarification, it, it, the machine, if, if somebody doesn't vote for a particular office, it doesn't kick it out, it goes in as a blank vote. What the, what kicks the machine out, and, and I was here at this presentation, what, what kicks the ballot out is, if somebody votes for two people for one office, where only one is, is supposed to be voted for, a spray mark on the ballot, maybe a wet ballot of some sort, but, yeah, it's doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with, if a person doesn't vote for a particular office, it's not going to kick it out, it's just going to go into the blank vote. So that, that's not a reason that it kicked it out.
Thank you.
Well, I, personally, I'd like to see the documentation on what it's going to kick out and why, before we set it up in here, just because I think the voters need to know what they're walking into, you know, as far as changes.
And we have the money already appropriated, obviously, to buy the machines?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else, any other questions, Bill?
Yeah, the ballots we currently use for the old machines, will they work in these machines?
Yes.
So, there's no extra cost?
No, and it takes an extended ballot, just as easily as it takes the shorter ballot.
But there is extra cost, we're going to have to have extra workers in here.
Actually, we should have had extra workers, the law requires a specific number of poll workers that we have not had. So, we should have checkers, we should have poll workers, we should have wardens, we should have clerks, we should have actually detail officers. There's a, a specific number that is required under the law that we have not had. So, as I mentioned earlier at one of these meetings, that the election budget was underfunded for fiscal '20, there was a missing election, so we need to transfer funds anyways. So, Beth and I have gone through, looking at what the count would be, how much the, each person was going to make for that day's, and all that will be taken into consideration when we have to make a transfer to cover the additional election as well.
Will it be a big transfer, like a?
No, it's about four to five thousand, I think, per election. So, we need to just see, like I said, where we stand with the current workers and the additional ones that we are required to have.
I did think of one additional concern, and, and again, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Beth, I'm just like, my brain is freewheeling right now. But, the absentee ballots, what happens if those have a problem? Are you going to contact the absentee voter, or do those get treated differently? And those would be treated differently?
They would all be submitted, that's what the intent was, if someone votes. You don't know if someone's voting, how they're voting, so all ballots would just be submitted.
Right, but in the past, all the ballots just get read into the machine, and then if there's a problem, because I've been there when there's been a recount, so I've seen the kind of things that get ballots disqualified, you know, like the two people, voting for two people. Right now, you vote for two people when you're not supposed to, it goes into the machine, and that doesn't get discovered, it just doesn't get counted, I would think. The machine's not going to count either candidate, right? I'm assuming, under the old, under the machine we have now.
Correct.
Correct, and the same with an absentee ballot, if, if that problem were on an absentee ballot, the same would happen to that absentee voter. So, they're treated the same. Whereas, if I'm understanding correctly, now, if you're present and voting, and you make a mistake, we're going to try and catch it for you, and have you fix your vote.
Correct.
But if you're an absentee voter, you come in, and you feel like, and there's something wrong, well, that's done. So, that vote's treated a little differently. I'm, I'm just pointing out, I'm not trying to put blockades, I know we have to go to this machine, but I just think we, we need to think through all these things, because there are recounts and things like that that happen, so.
At that point, it gets hand-read, there's an area in the back of the machine for ballots that aren't read, for some reason, and remember, there was an area in the back of the machine where they put those in, or they hand-read.
But again, if you needed, if you're asking the voter to say, if they vote for two people, you were saying, if they vote for, let's say they're supposed to vote for one, under library receivers, and they bubble in two, you're saying, and I'm not sure whether this is correct yet till we really look into this, that that ballot's going to get held up, and the person who gave you the, who gave the ballot in is going to be asked, well, did you mean to vote for two, because you can really only vote for one? And they're going to be allowed to change their vote?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, and so then the absentee voter, who might by mistake do the same thing, cannot change their vote.
Right, but that's the difference between being, being an absentee voter and coming in that day and actually voting.
Well, under the new machine, yes, I would agree.
Well, the same thing, same thing happened now.
It's the same thing, yeah.
Same thing would happen now.
Yeah, if you mess up, then you mess up.
I know, but right now, if I went and bubbled in too many people under one category, we're supposed to choose three, and I choose four, I would assume the machine, based on what I've seen in recounts, is just going to nullify that ballot, because I didn't follow the directions.
Not, not going to nullify the ballot, going to nullify the, the vote for that particular office.
That's what I'm, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, you're correct, it's going to nullify that vote. So, I'm not going to get, even though I was here, I'm not asked to fix it. But now, we will be asking them to fix it before they leave the voting.
If they'd like to, they don't have to fix it.
If they'd like to, I'm just saying it is, there is a little bit of a difference, that's all.
I think it's a positive difference, though. If the person has, is here and has made the error, they get to correct it right here.
Right. It's just that absentee ballot, people who maybe can't get in here, don't do not.
Well, it's the same as it is now, then, if you can't fill it out correctly, then you don't get the vote correctly.
Well, yes, but, okay, I'm just.
It's rocket science, it's filling in.
No, it's not rocket science, but there is a difference then in how the votes are being treated. That's all I'm pointing out, I'm just saying it's, it's a difference.
When are you, when will the machines get purchased, roughly?
Soon, we were hoping, there are restrictions on when you can use the machine, based on when you approve them.
Right.
And, a vote needs to be taken to actually accept the new machines and decommission the old machines.
Okay.
And we have to have the new equipment in 120 days prior to a state, a presidential primary or state election, and it'll be 60 days before municipal, uh, presidential election.
All right.
So, the plan was to, this week, order the new machines, get them in, and then, the first election that comes up, the company will actually be here on site that day, so they would actually be here for the presidential primary in March, so that the first time people go through it, they'll go through with the, with Beth, and with the wardens, and with the poll, so, a little bit different, the poll workers will not have anything to do with the machines, the checkers will not touch the machines, the registrars will not touch the machines, Beth and the two wardens or captains or head, whatever you want to call them, will be the only ones that will have access to those actual machines.
And that's what, that's where I was heading with this, is I was going to say, at one point in time, can we make sure that the people we're purchasing from come out when we're going to be using them?
It's on here.
Yeah, okay, all right, perfect.
One hour before and two hours after the election, on the first election.
So, yes, so there is an actual vote in your packet that you need to take, because Beth will need to send that into the state that shows that we took that.
Go ahead.
Is, do you know what the expected lifespan of these new machines are? And how do, how, how long do we get on the last machine, do you know?
Oh, they told us.
Ancient, right, from Roman times?
Yes.
I can make the motion, Beth.
Go ahead. Many time comes, yeah. I just want, I want to find this, because you have to vote on it, all right?
I, I think he said, I think he said they should last around 10 years with the software updates.
You want mine?
I think he said about 10 years with the soft.
Before the software they don't support anymore, then you have to buy.
Right, I think the current machines, he said technically, we should have replaced several years ago. So, we've gotten a, a lot of life out of the machines that we have.
Okay, and, and I guess, I'm just realizing that we might have been out of compliance with the law with regard to some of these poll workers and et cetera?
Which we were not aware of until we had this, we were lucky enough to have the Merrimack Town Clerk come over and sort of explain some of the stuff, and how many people are required, and. So, we met and we sort of went through a hypothetical list of who Beth would like to have, and how many people that we should have per precinct.
Good catch, thank you.
Okay.
So, I move in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 54, Section 34, on July 8, 2019, to discontinue the use of the existing voting tabulator machines, and start using the image cast precinct ICP machines effective August 1, 2019, as funding was approved at the 2019 annual town meeting, to purchase these new machines in FY '20. Yes, I need a second.
Second.
A second, a second ago, or you asking for a second?
No, I was asking. Okay. The motion was me to start using the machines, image cast, effective August 2019, so we need to get a number of votes, right?
Well, so Beth, Beth will certify that, so that next portion is for her, then she'll sign it and send it into the state.
All right, so, any other discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Good job.
Okay, moving on. We have the personal advisory board to continue discussion on the personal policy. Hello, how you, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. So I know we, we had talked about this earlier on, after you guys did all your hard work and what have you. I know there was some questions brought up, and I know it was, one of the things that I remember was we needed to pull away Denise's portion that she would deal with, and I think the biggest, one of our biggest stumbling blocks was the vacation, no, what is it?
PTO.
PTO, yeah, okay.
And how to make it so we did no harm to current employees, but kind of got up to date with the rest of the world with new employees.
Right.
And I think a lot of discussion, too, was to keep the advisory board as a continuing kind of fluid body.
Well, you guys did the work, we don't want to pull the work away from you, we want to have the conversation with you, make you guys feel like you're still in the conversation, and hopefully, we can put our both heads together and get this resolved.
If I may make one quick comment, Stan. So, we actually do not have a full personnel advisory board any longer, there's no longer a quorum. The two members you were looking at are the remaining two members of the five-member board. So, any future work, if you're going to ask them, we will need to find new members.
You didn't put it in your packets again.
I did not, I asked.
I think Denise may have some data online, or some of the images we've shared, so if there's something we need to reference, then I may need to leverage what she has on her computer.
Okay.
So, we really can't talk all this tonight?
Right.
We can talk a little bit about it, I mean, it depends on specifically what questions you have, or what, I mean, we have some targeted areas, I think Kathleen has some questions that Lynn and I went over, and things like that. So, I, I mean, we can talk about things, but I guess I don't know what we can do from here as far as changes until we have more members, right?
Right.
Right, so Kathy had six, or seven, eight?
Nine.
Nine questions that are in your packet, that I did forward to the members of the board, and asked them to review them before tonight's meeting.
So, you want to go through those, or?
Yeah, right, I, I apologize, I don't have that, the bylaw with me, but I do remember on pages one and two about the terminology of conclusive authority, and my concern was that since the personnel is, it's by name, an advisory board, wouldn't it more, be more properly advisory authority to, to interpret and advise? I, I just, I felt that would be better.
That's an interpretation, yeah.
But with the wording, could we change the wording to that effect?
Yeah.
Okay, good, so we could change the wording.
We, we had, let me, because you weren't, you weren't here in the earlier talk, so just to, just to, let me back up a little bit, but we had a couple of charges that we went forward with, and this started about a year and a half ago. We met with Denise, and we said, what are some of the big pain points? And we went through those, and we had very targeted areas, we didn't, we didn't go through the whole document. We, at the end, we went through the whole document, but specifically, we went through the PTO and sick time, we talked about the grievance committee, we talked about the probationary period, we wanted to review the probationary period, probationary period specifically for vacation time, for sure, because there's some instances where an employee would start, say, in July or August, after exiting the fiscal year, and unable to take vacation until the following fiscal year.
I saw that, yes.
So, those were some things that we wanted to, to try to attract employees to the town, right? To try to bring some value, what are some of the things that might be valuable to the employees, right? And we maybe give them a little more vacation time upfront, or a little sooner than having to wait a year in some of those instances. You know, some of the buyback things, people nowadays don't look for, I'm going to stay here for 20 or 30 years.
So sorry.
They're here, you know, employees, they, they come, they're, they, they may end up with a career here for 20 years, but they may not, but what's going to get them in the door for the next, you know, year or two? So, those were some things that we wanted to do, too, to try to attract people.
Okay. I know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm, and I, I, actually, I'm very supportive of revising the personnel procedures, I'll be honest, I'm, this PTO versus vacation time, I would need to see that costed out, in the worst-case scenario, as I said in my note on note six. Because these buybacks, we, we already have a deficit in the retirement side of the, of the equation, and we certainly can't afford to start creating deficits in our operational side of the town budget with this. But your point about the new employee being entitled to some type of time off, I, I fully support something to that effect. And I also, I, I think I also, my note on four, I, I do think that there should be some type of annual performance review for all employees, just because they deserve to have some feedback, be able to set some goals, it should be something we can manage, but I think in my conversation with Denise, we, we probably need to wait till we have some kind of a software program that could help facilitate that, is that?
No, you need to have a person that oversees everybody, because people are overseeing my boards, committees.
We need some kind of a town administrator or manager, too, in order to kind of tie that together. And I didn't know if you knew, do the department heads currently provide a monthly report of attendance? Because that was one of the, so do all department heads do that right now?
I get daily, anytime someone takes a day off, I get a time off request.
So this is already happening, okay. She can sneak, so for the people that report to an elected board who are not present day to day, how does that work, then the department head boards it to you?
The employees usually, like, with the water and sewer department, they wait for a commissioner meeting, and they sign off on the slips, and then it comes to me, or the department head will sign for the staff, and, so I get, we have actual time off request forms that every employee fills out, and then those come to me.
Okay.
So, it depends on who's, like, the Board of Health, it's the Board of Health members sign off on the staff's time.
And you said something about, we don't legally have to post every job that we have? Is that what, that's, is that what that was telling me in that document, that it's not a law, but we?
There's no, no, there's no law requiring job postings.
And so, do we want to put that into our personnel bylaw if it's not a law, or?
Well, I think it was Copeland and Page who also vetted this document again for us, before we had had it, and they were the ones that indicated, you know, that that was not required. Although, we sort of feel, in the interest of courtesy and transparency, that. Although, we sort of feel in the interest of courtesy and transparency that positions are, are posted.
But do we need to put that in our personnel bylaw? I mean, I think it's, we tend to post most jobs, right? But do some, do some towns just, um, not, not, if they know that they're gonna look internally first, do they not post it?
Correct.
So, if we knew already that we were gonna look internally first, what would be the pro and con of going one way or the other?
We, that, that was not one of our actions.
Okay, okay.
Again, we were very, high level, we were very focused on just a few items. It wasn't our focus to go through the entire document, because it had gone through a law firm previously.
Okay.
And there were some certain things that were, you know, sort of outdated. We wanted to, um, take a, take a fresh set of eyes and, you know, look at, and also not from a lawyer perspective, but from sort of a, you know, different, varying people from different places, you know? So, we had, when we started, we had a fireman, we had a mom, we had, you know, a municipal employee, a couple of people who do computer stuff, you know, myself and another gentleman who, you know, just recently left. And, you know, so we had a different, whole different set of eyes on there. So, that's, we were trying to look at it from that perspective.
Okay. I mean, most of my comments, like, the comment five, I think is all about whatever we're doing in our contracts as far as injuries and this and that. We just have to be consistent.
Right, so Kathy, if I can, so when, when the Personnel Advisory Board was reformed, I contacted town council, who said several years ago, they went through and made numerous changes that the town never moved forward with. So, that draft in turn went to the Personnel Advisory Board, and I said, here's what council has already reviewed and recommended. Take it from this version, 'cause if we are going to put a new policy in place, we better use the one that Copeland and Page has started and gone through. A lot of these things will come out of our personnel procedures manual, um, like the injured on duty and things like that. They'll have separate, we have a separate drug and alcohol policy now. We have a separate discrimination policy, uh, because they apply to all employees and not just those covered by the personnel, um, procedures manual.
Plus, we essentially did not cover and ignored all of the appendices, like computer use, internet use, you know, sexual harassment, all, all of that sort of thing. We, we didn't cover that at all.
Right, and then I guess my final comment, and I've, I've lost that page, but I do remember, was about, um, you know, statistically speaking, you know, when we try to hire and reflect the population, I mean, look at the five-member board. This is not reflective of the male, female split in the town. And that's, that's, I think, very typical of a, of a small town, that it's statistically, I believe, this is kind of my field, um, almost impossible to reflect that in, within all your departments. It still doesn't mean you try to, shouldn't try to make a good effort to have a diversity in your hiring pool, but, um, oh, this is it, that is-
From the back, yeah.
Yeah, from, here it is, I found my quote. Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't feel that if, unless there is some legal reason why we have to have this language in our personnel policy, wouldn't this set the, set goals for us that we may not be able to meet as far as hiring? Do you know, am I misunderstanding this?
Yes, that was an appendix, that isn't anything that we reviewed, so that was-
Oh, okay. So, I read the whole thing.
No, and that's fine, but under, in the beginning, we, we asked those same questions. Should we review the appendices? But those were being, we were told that those were being pulled out, they were gonna be separate items from the, from the Personal Advisory Board, from what we were looking at, personal policies there. And, you know, because they, they, they probably need to be different, they probably need to be updated, or I don't know, let's state their, because again, we didn't review them, so, um, so we didn't target those off.
Okay, thank you. Well, now I'm learning a lot tonight. I, I'm done, thank you.
Bring attention to, um, page fourteen.
Okay.
Discharge. An employee may be discharged by the town for cause. The employee shall be given written notice of the discharge, signed by the appropriate department head or finance director, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the, the selectmen do the hiring. The selectmen, far as I know, I have the final say on dismissing an employee, but there's nothing in that, under discharge, that, uh, they go before the board of selectmen. The second thing, uh, bring attention to page fifteen. Grievance procedure. And it, and it sets up the grievance procedure, but, uh, and it says here on page one, carried on to page two, "The Personal Advisory Board shall constitute a board, a board of appeal for grievances of town employees." But shouldn't the, the end result is that they, that they bring it after, even, maybe even after the Personnel Board, they bring them before the board of selectmen?
Should be, and I thought, I thought that we had removed that comment from the version that we had submitted. Because I remember we had discussions about that during our meetings, that it shouldn't be up to the advisory board to, you know, stand as the grievance committee. So, I'm not sure if that's in older versions you have.
Um, it's the one that, uh, one that was given to us, uh, a while ago. It's the only copy that I have. I haven't been, I haven't been given a, a further update.
Okay, okay. I, I'm not sure, I would have to double-check my own notes of what we sent over to make sure if that was there or not there. I know that we went through and accepted different changes and removed different things, but I do know, I vividly remember having those discussions, that it would not be up to the Personal Advisory Board to do that. In regards to your other comment about it being up to the board of selectmen, as far as someone being discharged, this is part of our, you know, submitting and looking for comments, you know, is there something we missed, right? So, and if there is, then by all means, um, you know, let's, let's go through it and we'll, and we'll correct it.
Right, so if I just may on that, so I think you corrected it in the grievance procedure section. It's just that first page needs to strike that, 'cause I think we talked about this, that you didn't feel that as the Personnel Advisory Board, you should be hearing grievances. So, we, we structured it that it would be the department head, um, and then if it continued on, it would be myself and one board member, because there's a timeline that we're required to meet that grievance. Instead of having to convene an executive session, it would be myself and a board member having that next step or final step in the process.
Sounds like some of that's gotta be cleaned up. And then there was, uh, you didn't get into the appendix at all, so I won't, I won't, I won't talk about that. Well, yeah, I will. There's a section in there, uh, on the first page, it, it applies to, uh, town employees, but there's a section in, I think it was page fifty-two, that applied to people coming into town hall. And I don't see how you can legislate people coming into town hall when it's a personnel bylaw.
I'd, I'd have to read it, because again, we didn't review it, so-
I knew that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
Yep.
Well, that's all I got for now.
Okay.
I got others, but I, I'll hold off on them.
Okay.
Mike, you all good with it so far?
Yeah, I mean, there's just, how many copies of this thing have we been looking through? And, you know, and what final copy were they looking at, or what final copy we were looking at?
And, and what, what version are you all wanting to accept?
Right, so there's like five moving parts to this, so.
So, I think the last one I got was February fourteenth.
Sounds all right.
Yeah. That's the, that's the one I got.
Yeah, that was the last one I received.
So-
But the one I had had highlighted on it with questions where we had to look at things.
That was the February fourteenth one.
It was just February fourteenth, Kathy, 'cause I remember, 'cause I read through it in our review, 'cause Denise had attached it in an email, so.
Oh, great, thank you.
So, moving, moving forward tonight, we, these guys really can't do much work anyway, because they gotta get more members. So, we really can't do anything till we get more members, but you leaving here, is there any way we can get them a list of what we're looking for? I mean, or should we wait till they meet again and then come back?
I think you need to tell them what you're looking for.
I think they need three more members.
Well, I think-
I got that. What I'm saying is, when they leave here, they find three members, at least when they leave here tonight, we're not gonna have them come back again and say, hey, we're back again to tell you what we want. That's all I'm saying. Do we have a good idea of what we want to give you when you get your members? You can get a meeting and get that all taken care of.
I, I would appreciate any and all feedback, and if it can be fumbled through Denise, and if Denise can't-
Yeah, go ahead.
-come up with us, then, you know, we can do that, we can work on it.
If it's, if it's okay with the board, I, I think we should take a, a run at making the changes we feel are appropriate, as far as, um, the duties that belong here and the Personnel Director versus, um, things that they can, um, advise us on. And I think they've done a lot of work, that we should go through it and at least, um, tell, make changes, not just go shoot, send them back to just spin their wheels again. I don't want them working again and having us then, I mean, I would-
They need to know what we're looking for, they need-
Well, I think I, I kind of said it here. I said that, um, the PTO, um, I would, I would probably go back to what we already have, 'cause we know how much that costs. So, unless somebody here is going to do a cost analysis on this PTO option, no, would be my recommendation, because you've already voted a budget.
This isn't gonna happen this year, I don't think, right?
Well, even so, unless you, you're willing to do a cost benefit and tell me how much the worst-case scenario will do, cost the town with people buying back PTO days every single year. Right now, if I understand this correctly, the only time we have employees buyback time is when they retire, am I right?
So, if someone were to leave their service and have a good vacation, they buy that back?
Right.
Or when they retire, they buy a percentage of their sick time?
So, there's two conditions under which we have to fund a buyback right now. This would introduce an annual buyback that we would have to budget for. And again, we're already in a deficit situation budgeting for the retirement benefits. So, I can't imagine why we would recreate another deficit in the budget at this time.
May I, may I make a comment?
Sure.
The buyback is short. For the vacation, for this PTO buyback, it's, it's a really short timeframe, versus the current situation, where long-term employees have the opportunity to buy back a percentage of sick time. What we've suggested is a considerably shorter timeframe. You're only allowed to go over by, what, five, five days?
I think so, five days.
So, that's-
No, there's a carryover too. I mean, unless, unless somebody wants to sit down and cost this out for me in the worst-case scenario with somebody who's carrying over and buying back the maximum amount, and all employees, they're allowed to opt into this, including our union contracts, right? Can opt into this if they choose?
No, there's a union, there's a union contract.
Okay, so all, show me, show me the cost of the worst-case scenario. I'd have to see that.
And by show you, I suspect not to dump this on Denise's lap, but I suspect that, that, that's the neck of the woods. You know, ours was simply looking at those options. As a, as an incentive, if you will, for example.
Denise wants to talk, go ahead.
But it's an incentive toward what end? Toward what end?
Obtaining, you know, helpful, knowledgeable, skillful staff, who would be here for, say, five to ten years? That sort of thing.
I, I, I don't know.
I think the generation that's currently seeking employment isn't looking for that twenty-year, thirty-year carrot at the end. They're just not.
I don't know that they're, I don't know, know that they're looking to buy back their vacation time every year either. So, they, I guess that's my, my thing.
But I suspect what will happen is it will be, it'll be used, which has no additional cost. When you use it, there's no cost, no additional cost.
But, so I would say, so that brings up my issue with PTO that we talked about when I came to meet with you guys. I have two big issues. The first one is, as the person who has to track everybody's time, employees being PTO and all union contracts being vacation, sick, and personal, it will become a little cumbersome to track who gets what. The second issue is, my concern throughout this whole thing was, to what Stan alluded to earlier, if an employee is hired in September, they actually have to wait almost twenty-four months before they can take time off, 'cause you have to work a complete year as of July first. That is what is hindering us from hiring people, because they do not, they're not entitled to any vacation time. But I think going to an extreme of PTO, currently, you know, a new hire after a year would have their two weeks of vacation and their accrued sick time. To then go to a bank of five weeks of PTO creates a hardship, where we have one-person offices in town hall. We're not like private industry, where people can work from home and get their job done, or there's office coverage. We close the offices and stick a sign on the door that the office is closed. So, we have one, you know, it's a, it would be a hardship for me if my staff, I have one person right now in the tax office, she's out five weeks, then I cover, then my stuff's not getting done. With the board of health, it's just a closed office. The assessors, it's a closed office. I think going from two weeks to a bucket of up to five weeks of time, I think it's just a lot of time, and it's gonna create some issues here with staff coverage. Is my concern with that.
Can I just? If we could discuss this, you, it's gonna affect you and the town would have you a little bit more. Could you, in the next meeting, well, pick this up again and tell us exactly what you said and put a whole timeline of what you, what you're thinking together?
What I'm thinking as far as-
It's like what you just discussed. I mean, what your option would be, what you think your best option would be.
Yeah, I mean, personally-
That makes sense in town hall.
I mean, personally, I think the vacation, sick, and personal works if you just start an accrual when someone's hired. You accrue so many the first year.
Right.
And then at least you have time you can take. You're not waiting to take time.
Okay.
I think PTO is great. I think we're just not there yet, 'cause we just don't have the staff to accommodate it.
Right.
I just feel like, we're in the public if we have closed offices, because people are getting so much more time.
And I agree, I agree.
So, it'd probably be good to have like just a little table that says, this is what we have now, this is the PTO, and then here's the mid, mid-step that we might be able to do, to give the newer employees some vacation time accrual and see what everybody thinks. I think if you put it in a table, it would make a lot of sense to everybody.
We have, at the last meeting, we had a presentation, and there was a, you may have it, but, and, and we showed, like, this is what you have currently, and this is what you get.
Right.
Now, yeah, maybe there's a happy medium. And again, this is, this was just what we came up with, our recommendation. You know, obviously, that we wanted feedback, and then how, do we rework it, or how can we rework it, right? That may be a better fit, so.
And, and we really appreciate that you guys are looking at this and trying to advocate for people who would wanna work here. And I feel like the town has made a lot of steps. We've raised salaries past two years in a row for positions that maybe weren't getting paid as well as they should have been, and maybe we're not all the way where we should be. But I feel like that's the first thing to address, the salary, the competitive salary.
So, where would we stop by getting this table?
I can reforward it. It was in, I have their PowerPoint from January.
But could you put a mid-proposal into that table? Like a, this is what Denise thinks?
I can give you a recommendation, if that's what you'd like.
Is that what we'd like?
I think so. I think it makes sense. I mean, you, you're dealing with this every single day of the week. You know what I'm saying? That's, definitely throw a column in for Denise, or don't put Denise, put town hall. What makes sense? No, don't do town hall, town people.
Just put Denise.
All right.
I can take that chart.
Go ahead, Ed.
Like, reading all the, this paid time off, uh, this, to me, this works great in private industry, but it doesn't work that great in municipal government. You know, as you know, the, the, in past several years, most of the, uh, private employees, employers have got rid of their pension system. And so, people just bounce from job to job with a 401K, and the, as you note, some people in private industry have had two or three jobs in one year. They just go from company to company to company. They don't, it, it's not like it was forty years ago, where a person went over to Western, the old Western Electric, and they stayed there for their career. Most of the people in municipal government, if they move, they don't move into, uh, the dreaded private sector. They stay in municipal government. They may move to a different city or town, but they stay mostly in the town in which they start. There's very little movement from one town to another. So, uh, this, to me, it's, it's gonna be very costly for the town. I, I, I don't really agree with this paid time off. I, I see the reason is that you can't recruit somebody that's gonna start and maybe have to go for a year plus without vacation time. But that's the way it is. This doesn't work that way in private industry, as, the same way it works in municipal government. And most of these paid time off regulations are set more towards the private sector rather than municipal government. And so, I don't know whether some people on the committee had a lot of background in, in private industry and looked at the personnel policies there, but it, it just seems like a lot of it is, is not set up for a municipality.
We looked at a, a variety of towns, and I think we also provided that, the list and a spreadsheet of the different towns that we looked at and all the different bylaws that they had. We extracted information from all of those and tried to come up with a happy medium along with, it was based on their time, as well as based on thinking about forward-thinking approach, future forward-thinking, you know, PTO as a private sector thing. This could be something innovative that the town of Roland could impose, you know?
Yeah, Westport was one of them, because it still showed up on a couple of pages in the paperwork, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any?
You know, I, I'd like to see, as, when I ask the questions here, they ask what version you had, because it was taken out. I'd like to see them, uh, give us what the new version is. So, the, the one we have here is in February. Sounds like there's been a new version since then.
No, I didn't, no, I think that's the, that's the latest version. I don't think we've done any work on that. I just, I know that we had sent some other copies. I just, I know that we had sent some other copies, I can't, we're going back four or five months ago, so, you know, hard for me, I'm getting older, it's hard for me to remember everything every day.
You're getting older standing up there.
Are you good, Bill?
Yep.
Mike, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, everyone else is all set?
I'm good.
Well, thank you for coming in and spending the time and what have you, and we'll get Denise to put our thing together and you'll hear them back from us and hopefully get more committee members.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, not a problem, thank you for coming in.
Good night.
Okay.
I just reforwarded the presentation, just so you see that, but I will put a new chart together for the next one.
So, moving on, we have the Four Lindsay Way right of first refusal. Okay, so is that the one here with, from Chappa?
Yes, it is. So this is similar to a letter we got a few, I don't know, months ago. Because the property at Four Lindsay Way was a 40B project, the town has the right of first refusal. Otherwise, they will put it at the resale price and they can sell to an ineligible purchaser but subject to the deed restrictions. I don't see that we have the means to purchase a, this property, so I would recommend you approve the, or decline our right of first refusal, however you'd like to.
Is that what the motion needs to be?
What do other towns do that, what towns or cities do that have the money to purchase these properties? Do they purchase them and if so, what do they do with them?
No, so it goes back to, you know, we'd need an updated master plan. We have our housing production plan that we've worked on over the last few years. And I shouldn't say we don't have, we do have money under our Affordable Housing, CPA. We have money under our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We just, we don't have an Affordable Housing Committee. We lost all those committee members years ago when nothing moved forward with affordable housing. Rebecca has taken affordable housing as her FY '20 CPA project that she's going to work on and try and come up with some ideas on how to either improve or bring in some affordable housing. So something like this, I think we could look at potentially in the future. It is deed restricted, so it will have to stay affordable, but the town could certainly purchase it and, you know, use it in some other capacity or add it to the housing authorities' charge, something like that.
That was going to be my question, if we wanted to use the Affordable Housing Budget, how would we do that if we wanted to? Or in the future, how would we allocate that?
So I would say, again, we'd have to have a Affordable Housing Trust form to actually access. Not so much the CPA money, we'd have to follow, just like any other CPA proposal we have that comes in on any development over three homes, goes into our Affordable Housing Fund. So I think we'd need to just have a trust. I'd have to look and see what the requirements are to spend from it, but I think once we had a trust and had a charge to that trust, they could access it to bring in affordable housing.
Do you know offhand how much is in that fund?
Um, I, I did, but I don't...
Because our 40Bs will from that, right? So, I mean, at some point, we have to do something with 40B.
Yes.
Or if they make a divorce, I mean, that's the other option, but I mean, I know.
Off the top of my head, I can look it up while we're talking. There's a significant amount of money, because I think it's $80,000 for every developer that's building more than three home subdivisions.
In Groveland, I know the housing has down on Gardner Street, they have a couple houses down there? That, and there was one up on Briscoe Heights that they purchased and they put people in them.
Yep.
Would that be us to purchase, or would be the housing would have to purchase?
Well, that's the Housing Authority that's, that has control of those. Again, it's something you could work at.
Can this be offered to the Housing Authority to purchase?
Well, I think that's something you'd have to meet with the Housing Authority and see if it's something that they're willing to, if there's properties that the town wants to purchase and put it under their control, if that's something they want to expand.
Right.
So, the next step would be, if we did do something with this, we don't even have the personnel in place, civil board, place, committee, whatever it is, to actually facilitate running those types of things.
The Housing Authority would do it.
Right.
Right?
We don't have the, we don't have the facility right now to purchase them because we just don't have the resources together to actually go through. Like, if you wanted to purchase this, we'd have to figure out who's going to oversee that, you know?
Right, that's what I mean, there's nobody to do it.
Correct. But I think once it came under the town, it would then fall under the Housing Authority, you have to work with the Housing Authority.
So that'd be the second step where if we take it, then it'd go right to them to do it.
Correct.
Right.
So, I guess technically, there is someone that could handle it?
Well, you'd have to talk to them and see if, if they could expand their...
There's 15 other steps that would have to take place before we could even get them.
Right.
Okay. So, do we want to make a motion to the right of refusal, first refusal? We don't want it?
You want to make a motion, refuse it?
Refuse it?
I'll make the motion for purposes of discussion to refuse it.
Okay, I'll give a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, my only question is, it still stays in our affordable housing category, no matter what we do, whether we take control or don't take control.
Correct, because it is deed restricted.
Okay, so, yeah, then I, we're not in a position to take this on at this point, right?
Any more discussion on this?
Well, that, that may be partly true because, maybe not be completely true because based upon the letter here, they have 90 days to find an eligible purchaser and then at the end of September, it looks like they can sell it to anybody.
Right, but it's still going to have a deed restriction on it.
Right, it's, they can...
I'm not sure about that.
I think what they're referring to is the eligible purchaser has to be a certain income level. And if they can't find that purchaser, they can sell to somebody who might earn more money, but the unit would still count as affordable housing.
Yes, it does say that, subject to deed.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of null and void in this? Okay. Okay, moving on, we have the pines, fees, and uses discussion.
We don't have any tables or anything on that, do we? No, there's no documentation.
Other than we were discussing at the last meeting, Penn Tucket and what their use would be.
Oh, yes, we have a letter.
So I did reach out and they don't expect any additional usage of the pines during construction.
That was my question, they said additionally, so they expect to continue to use it without paying a fee?
Well, I think right now, everybody expects to continue to use without paying a fee until you have that discussion.
Right, so, okay, no, I'm just, I know, I know I'm a little bit behind some of it, but what I'm saying is that, so what we're determining tonight then is, whatever fee it would be, they would pay it for what they're doing and everybody else would pay for what they're doing, if we determine a fee.
Yeah, you'd have to decide if you're going to hold Penn Tucket to that same arrangement, yes.
Yes.
So, do we have an, an operation budget over there, what it costs us a year to operate that place?
No, because it comes out of many different accounts right now. I pay for stuff out of the lawn and grounds account, we pay for it out of the pines money.
Right. But I'm saying is, at the end of the year, what does it cost us to...
I have no idea.
Well, it'd be good to know if we could figure that number out.
I don't know how we will, because the highway cuts the grass, softball pays for some stuff, baseball pays for some stuff.
When you say stuff, what do you, what do you mean?
They'll pay for redoing the baselines, they donate time to maintain the fields.
Okay, but they don't mow, so we could prorate the mowing and we have to, the only other real big cost is the bathroom cleaning.
I thought Penn Tucket, the group, Penn Tucket mows the grass.
Sometimes the baseball field, yep, but we do, the town does everything else.
Right, but what I'm trying to get at is, I understand the highway and I understand the volunteers, but I'm just saying, what it's costing us right now out of pocket to run that place? That's what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is if we had a number and then we know there's X amount of people using that place, now we could come to a fee schedule or a fee number, that's all I'm saying. We don't really have a, it'd be hypothetical, if we set a number right now?
Do any of the towns around us have a fee schedule that they tend to utilize? Where there's a fixed bathroom that they have to maintain and all?
That, I have no idea, I don't know who has fixed bathrooms.
I mean, that's what's driving this discussion a lot, is we may need to get a contractor in there to do the bathrooms eventually, right? That's what we might.
No, I don't think that's driving the discussion at all.
Well, and then, and then we're mowing all the grass and, and the other leagues collect...
I'm not, I'm not trying to zero in on the mowing, I'm trying to zero in on over and above cost that, like, like they, I know the fertilization comes out of the sand money, we're depleting, we're depleting, we're depleting. So all I'm trying to do is to come up with a number, what it costs us over and above that stuff so we can say, okay, it's $20,000 a year, and now we'd say, okay, X amount of teams use that.
Right, no, I understand that, but you have to keep in mind that if we're going to start charging a fee, then we need to assume that the things that baseball and softball are paying for, they're going to stop paying for it and the town is going to have to then pay for those items.
So, I had a conversation with the guy, and I've said this before, in Georgetown, and I know that no one's going to want to hear this, but what Georgetown does is Georgetown appropriates every single year, they come up with, okay, they're going to do this, this, and this to their seven fields for the year. They come up with a number and every single year, they vote the money in their budget, which costs money. So they used to be at $25,000, now they're at $30,000 a year. So they know, come July 1st, they're going to do this project, this project, and they know we're going to have the sprinkler company do this and they know their number.
Yep, right.
So that's where they come up with their money.
Right. Right, but our number comes from so many different places.
I, I understand, let me just please finish.
Go ahead.
So what I'm saying is, now they do have some fee, fees, but their fees are not as high because they're kicking this money in to help offset the fees. But the fees are, and what they do use their fees for is, let's just say they want to redo the mulch in their playground. That money now goes into doing that one project, you know, that's how they do it. And that's, you know, go ahead, Kathy.
I guess I thought what we talked about was some type of revolving account to ensure that whatever fee is collected down there, it stays with that property and is used to enhance it. And I guess what I'm coming to is, we have a revolving fee fund for the boats.
We have a revolving account for the pines, we created it last year.
Okay, but we also have, do the boat ramp fees go into that revolving account?
Yep.
And how about the moorings?
That's all the boat ramp.
So, but that's two separate things, like you don't have to buy a mooring if you buy a boat.
Right, but that all falls under the boat.
Correct, no, I'm just, I'm just differentiating the fees. So, so we do have a couple of fees already down there, and they all are going into...
But that money, that money that you're talking about right there pays for the dock repair, pays for the stuff at that area.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we already have fees there for people that are using it, so it would only be fair to set, I mean, how, I don't know what these fees are off the top of my head right now. What is the boat ramp fee on an annual basis?
It's only $25 for residents. But so that, Kathy, that was the complaint when we were trying to get money for CPA to do the boat ramp over. The complaint was that the people in town didn't want to pay to redo the boat ramp because it was a lot of money, but the boater's complaint was, they're the only ones that are paying to use that facility. So they're actually paying and they've been paying all these years and they felt that they should have the town appropriate the funds to redo the ramp. And that was a big criticism a few years ago between the recreation folks, and I don't mean the committee, I just mean those that use the recreation side of it, versus the boaters, because the boaters, even when it comes to the dog park, you know, we get complaints that the boaters are the only ones paying to use that property. And they don't feel that that's fair when all the other money is poured into the rest of the pines.
Right, and so I guess my, my point would be that, you know, the fee on the boat ramp, I think our boat ramp fee is probably, it's a very, it's a very sweet fee, it's low. I know, we had a boat for a while and I know from comparing to other towns, it's really great to be a resident of Groveland and you can put your boat in, the mooring fee is very reasonable, the boat ramp fee is very reasonable, it's a lot of fun. I'd like to keep these fees reasonable so that the teams don't feel like we're trying to fleece them, but I'd also like to make sure they understand the money is going into a revolving account dedicated, you can prorate it however you want. But I thought, the only way we're really going to know what to set these fees at is to get a season under us with the bathrooms open and see, how's that working out? You know, we don't really know how it's going to work out, right? We don't know.
But this money's not only for the bathrooms, this money's got to be for other stuff down there too, fertilization, reclaiming. There's a lot of stuff that goes on down there that we need the money to go.
Okay, but I mean, you're thinking like...
So I, I don't think it's just a bathroom, I think that there's a big picture down there and there's a big operation that goes on, money that we need to figure out what that number is and then take that number and say, okay, we got $20,000 bucks. Do we want to go to Town People and say, we're going to put it in the, in the annual budget? Or do we want to turn around and turn it over to fees? That's the way we got to do it.
You could certainly figure out how long it takes them to mow and price it out at an hourly rate, if that's what you're trying to create. I mean, I'm just thinking we need to get a season with everything open and see what is involved down there and kind of try to use it at the end of the season, meet with these groups and see what they think.
Yeah, the one big problem you have with trying to get a season under your belt is you have too many fragmented parts. As Denise is trying to say, and from experience now, sitting through it for a year, you have the Babe Ruth folks coming in and saying, we're going to pay a company to come in and cut the field lines, the base paths, the infield, and we're going to pay for that. So the town doesn't really know how much that costs and if there was a deal made or what it was. The folks will come in, volunteers, and they'll spend a couple of hours raking, moving dirt.
Picking up trash.
Picking up trash, painting, repairing. We don't know how much that's worth. You have other folks bringing in softball, girls will bring in clay and they'll bring in turf mix to pick up puddles. We don't know what that expenditure is. You have fertilizer costs, which a number of different organizations will contribute to, so we don't really know what a full year of that is. There's a number of variable costs and tangible costs that we really don't have a good handle on because right now, they're being supported by organizations outside the town.
By that, can you explain that a little more for me? What do you mean, organizations outside the town?
Penn Tucket Babe Ruth Association has nothing to do with the town of Groveland.
Oh, it's a, I didn't realize, I thought it was Babe Ruth, okay.
Penn Tucket Youth, Girls Softball has nothing to do with the town of Groveland. AAU Baseball, American Legion Baseball, I don't know how many different softball leagues are going on there. Penn Tucket Youth Football, you have...
Lacrosse.
Lacrosse.
Who schedules this?
I do.
Ah.
So you see, it's not, it'd be great if everything was, all these costs were borne by the town and we could look back historically and say, this is what it's going to cost us, but that is just going to be near impossible because there is money, but with time and labor, sweat equity. I know there's a fellow, Mr. Stark, has donated rakes, he's donated hoses, he's donated other items. There's a cost associated, we just don't know, and over the years, it's kind of...
So once you pull that all away, it's going to cost a lot more money.
Correct, and like I said, I'm assuming if you're going to implement a fee, they're going to stop doing those.
Right, I understand that, I, I understand that.
Well, what, what if they understand that the fee doesn't include those? I mean, if they want to continue to do some volunteerism there, the fee would be a lot lower than if they pull everything out. I mean, it's up to them really, to some degree.
It is, but...
But Denise is scheduling all this and so that's administrative time from our, our financial director scheduling baseball teams. I didn't know that this was going on.
But I think you're missing the big picture is, is, the, the, Pines is such a unique area because it really serves so many different groups, where the other parks in the town are really almost unique to one entity. And they're really serviced almost entirely self-efficient, self-funding by those entities that run them. But once you get up to this level, that, that level of volunteerism begins to depreciate rapidly because the kids that, you know, the parents are involved with the young children. These aren't mostly young children now, they're 13s and older. Now the parents begin to fall away from the volunteerism and because it's not really unique to any one organization, you have so many different groups down there competing for the same time and resources. But I don't think that, in a way they do and in a way they don't, it's a very difficult thing to get a handle on. But right now, I, I don't think that all the groups that are using it, I don't think we really have a handle on who's using it. I don't think we really have a handle on...
Well, Denise schedules it, so we must have a handle on who's using it.
Yes.
So we have that.
And no. Who took out the permit for the pines, the Major League Baseball field?
I, I don't off the top of my head, I have to go through the permits and the schedule.
It's probably Penn Tucket Youth, Penn Tucket Babe Ruth. But within that Penn Tucket Babe Ruth, I think you have AAU teams playing and I know that, I've seen American Legion games scheduled there too. And I know they don't have really much of anything to do with Babe Ruth. So, is, there are groups down there that, I don't know how it works. It's such a disjointed, fragmented...
All right, so let me, one second. So one thing, one thing we could do, if you want to talk about fees, would be maybe how would you come up with not Groveland, if you're saying there's a lot of outside people using it or whatever, would you charge them? If you're saying there's a lot of outside people using it or whatever, would you charge them the fees and leave the Groveland volunteerism type people alone? Or just stay away from fees period and let's figure something out down the road?
No, so when Bill said not Groveland, everybody is affiliated with the town of Groveland, just not the town itself, they're all Groveland groups.
Right, okay.
So they're all volunteers that live in the town of Groveland.
Right.
We don't have like Haverhill groups coming over and using it because we don't have the availability. We've had people ask, but we are pretty much booked.
Well.
No, but American Legion Baseball is Newburyport.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Right, and I don't have something from them, everything I have comes through.
But I know there, there are scheduled, have been scheduled games at the pines for American Legion Baseball.
Then we'll have to figure out who's doing that, because then they're subleasing our fields, because I don't have insurance on American League Baseball or whatever.
American Legion, well there you go, and this is, again, I, I think I'm in a unique position because I think, I think I've spent every day of my life down in that park from early April this year to today. So I've, I've now become aware by observing what's going on down there that it's a bigger problem than I think we, we know. There's a lot of use, but there's, I don't know if we're getting, um, the, uh, how could we say? The reciprocation of, um, you know, a hospitality, uh, rewarded in, in commensurate, you know, sums.
Well, I mean, it doesn't cost the town nothing to maintain this park. We maintain a police presence there, we maintain the roads.
We all agree with that though, we do.
Right, so I think, I hope we all agree that there needs to be a fee.
Right, but I, what I'm trying, what I'm having a hard time dealing with right now is what, what Bill just said. If you turn around and put a fee on, are you gonna stop all the volunteerism down there and what have you? And now it's gonna cost the town more money to do what they've been doing, that's all, that's what I don't wanna cause.
Well.
So do we.
It's already costing us more money, we have our facilities guy maintaining the bathrooms, Denise is scheduling all the teams.
So the cleaner way, the cleaner way then, the cleaner way then to do it is to put it on the town meeting floor and let to see if the town meeting people wanna throw a number in on the budget, yearly budget and let them vote. Say, okay, you people wanna put twenty grand or whatever, that's what, what I was going to, I was trying to see what it roughly would cost to run that. I mean, let the highway mow it, I mean, not, they've already mown it and that's kinda, that's all I'm saying, and that would be the cleaner way of handling it than to get into fees.
This is our job, this is the selectman's job to determine fees and fee schedules in the town, it's one of our primary responsibilities.
I understand that, but I clearly, clearly hear what you're saying, but I'm also hearing what other people are saying, if you put the fees, you're gonna stop the volunteerism. This way here, we keep the volunteerism, but we get, every year we get appropriated dollar amount toward that pines facility to help offset the cost, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, the only other thing I could think of is, is if you did just a nominal fee for bathrooms, lights, things like that, that are over and above what's been down there.
Alright, so the, when then.
You know, what that would be, I don't know, but that's, you could certainly do a per kid, five dollars a kid to go towards the bathrooms or something, you know, so that you're not charging a two hundred dollars or whatever.
So it'd be five dollars a kid per team?
But you're charging something to go towards the bathrooms and the lights and things like that.
Well, back in the day, Haverhill, uh, would do that. Uh, Haverhill Senior Baseball charged a five dollar per participant and that was a fee that they would turn over to Haverhill. Five dollars per, so whatever they're, if they had a hundred people in their program, it was five hundred dollars, they wrote a check to Haverhill.
Alright, that makes sense.
We could, we should start, I think, with the lights. I don't think this tax payer should subsidize the lights in the softball field, they don't do it for any, anyplace else.
I got an email last week from softball that they have a check for the lights.
Oh.
So they plan to turn over a check for.
That's very good.
Light usage.
So I mean, if we could start with baby steps, we could start there, come up with a number of five dollars per, and that's gonna help janitor and what have you, that, that's a start. It's not gonna croak us.
Right.
And, and we don't have to go to town, we'll start with that, and then we can do that for the first, and then maybe next year we could see what it's gonna cost us. Go ahead Ed.
Um, thank you for getting around to me.
I'm sorry, a lot of people are talking.
Yeah, out of order. Um, I, I think we need to, uh, a couple of things that, uh, Bill O'Neil mentioned that kinda concerned me was, one, was mentioned that, uh, some of the different leagues are, uh, putting fertilizer on the field. I, I think we, uh, we should put a stop to that, we should know what, what's going on at field, uh, when it's going on, we should, we should be keeping a track of that. And, uh, there should be a two-tiered system, whether it's, uh, a Groveland organization or a private organization. Like, for instance, the, this past weekend, there was a tournament down there, uh, AAU Baseball and Northeast Hurricanes out of, uh, Salisbury, Nashua and, uh, Salem, New Hampshire. And, uh, they should be paying more than what, uh, a Groveland organization is paying. Uh, and Groveland organizations should have priority over these other groups. Now, I don't know, uh, what they have for liability insurance, uh, if they had, if they were.
No, and I don't have a permit from them, so I don't know who's.
Well, how, how do they get authorized to use the field?
They've gotta be going under, as Bill said, they've gotta be going under one of the other organizations.
And if you look up on their website, they, uh, they are listing, uh, back from the, from the spring, uh, from the start of the season, they're listing, uh, the pines as a, uh, field that they, they use for practice. And I think it was either Tuesday or Wednesday night, it almost threw, throughout the whole summer, they listed as a, uh, a practice field. For, uh, they have different age groups that are down there. Uh, but I think we should, we should be putting a stop, at least, if these groups don't have a liability coverage, uh, if, if somebody gets hurt down there, uh, whose, uh, whose responsibility is it? We should make sure that they have the proper coverage. And there's no reason that if they don't have the coverage, that they can't be thrown off the field.
And, and it goes back to what I said a long time ago was that Denise is a finance director and her time should be better spent than dealing with fields. And we should have went and looked at probably either hiring someone twenty hours, um, a year or whatever to manage those fields and to manage our rec, our rec department, period. And I said that a long time ago, I mean, it's getting to the point where the rec, the rec, I'm not saying the rec committee, the rec department needs to have someone oversee it at this point in time. So, and that would help with these fees, it would help with everything that we need to be doing.
Yep.
And you, you keep, um, mentioning about how Georgetown does it. Georgetown has a, uh, at their American Legion Beach, they have a snack shack.
Yep, and they get money from that.
They get money for it. And there's, that, I can see in the future, uh, with, with all these people using the field, uh, if the, that the town could put up a snack shack and put it out to a bid, uh, to somebody to run it, uh, for the season. And, and the town, uh, collecting the money. Uh, I think that's the way Georgetown does it, is they, they have a fee, uh, goes out to bid and they, they bid on it, uh, so much for the season.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I, I think that would be pretty profitable down there. You know, maybe that's something that the recreation committee, when they get, uh, the meeting get established, uh, could, could look at.
Okay.
Um, well, we need to put a stop to this.
Go ahead Denise.
Uh, this group that if they're using the field and they don't have the proper insurance, we need to, we need to have somebody look into that. It shouldn't be.
I agree.
If, if they're, if they're scheduled for this week or, or over the weekend, uh, they, they should be told to bring in, uh, a certificate of liability coverage.
Well, the liability would be with the person who took out the permit, that why have the liability insurance, which it's, um, it's Kentucky Babe Ruth.
Well, this is a, this is a separate, this is a, this is AAU Baseball and Northeast Hurricanes.
Right, but Babe Ruth has reserved the fields every single day.
Every single day?
Every single day, ten to eight on Saturdays, ten to eight on Sundays, four to eight Monday through Friday.
Are they running under, uh, the Kentucky Baseball, uh?
They must be. I'll have to check, but they're the ones who I have a permit from and I have an insurance.
Can we, can we send a letter to them and ask them what's going on?
Yeah.
Can we ask them and just say, please let us know what's going on, the bo, boater selectmen wanna know, what, what's going on with these fields? Lot of, you know, teams that we haven't seen around.
So there, there should be a two-tiered system like that. Uh, and at the, the, the teams that are actually using the field should be the ones that are on the, seeking their own permit rather than working under somebody else's permit.
Right, because they're subleasing our field technically, because I'm sure, I don't know if they're getting money or not.
Oh, you can almost guarantee that.
Um, but Bill, if I can just comment, so Mike, I would say to you that if we're looking to go to town meeting and have town meeting appropriate funds, it should be for a recreation person. And then you start to wean them off of general fund because as they're raising, as, we've talked about this, I think since the day I started here. Recreation should be more than just youth sports, they can have breakfast with Santa and gingerbread contests and the pumpkin fest. And as they accumulate fees by doing those things, they start to pay for their own salary.
Right.
I think it's a person that's needed to handle the fields and scheduling and versus maintenance.
That's the start.
I think that's what you need to start.
But in the short term, for tonight's discussion, we should, if you wanna put that for another agenda item, we can. But for tonight, if we can get at least, do the like five or ten dollars per kid or whatever we think, I mean, at least help get something going. I mean, it's gonna help, but we don't even know how many people are down there. For all we know, we don't know until we now figure out what these guys are talking about, there's people down there using the fields we don't even know about.
You don't know, so to, to put a fee.
When I was down there with you doing the science of the day, there.
Is there a point of order, point of order?
People down there.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Well, here's, here's.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
I think Mike would have been really waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I like listening to this, go ahead.
He's hitting himself in the head.
Oh.
Oh, it's Mike.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so a, a couple of points, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of nickel and diming the residents of Groveland with another fee. Um, I do like that the softball has written a check for the use of the lights, that's something that we should be asking them to incorporate, uh, but not charging another fee to the residents. Um, with the exception of Bill, does anybody know what it costs to sign a kid up for sports?
I don't have to.
Two hundred eighty-five dollars?
I used to always have.
I just paid two hundred dollars for my son to play football for one season. It's not cheap, so if we keep adding five dollars here, ten dollars here for more fees to the parents, it's just gonna be cost prohibitive and then the kids won't be able to play. So I'm not in favor of more fees. I am in favor of people helping out and realizing that stuff down there is paid for by the town. And the town doesn't always have the money to do all these things, but we're squeezing dollars and pennies to do it for them. But should they donate some money like the softball team has? Yes, but to charge every kid five dollars to use the bathrooms, I am not in agreement.
So, not to interrupt you, but if, if it's costing you two hundred dollars for your kid to go down and do whatever he's doing, and there's, let's say there's fifteen, twenty kids on the team. All those two hundreds for that team, we're getting nothing out of it, where's that money all going?
I get that.
Where's that money all going? So that, that money should start rolling back to us.
Are they making, are these groups making a profit?
I get that.
On those fees.
But to go back and say, now we're gonna charge them two hundred and five dollars so they can use the bathroom instead of having to go to an outhouse.
So then we gotta start charging teams rather than individuals, but teams, not individuals.
Yes.
Right, I mean, the likelihood that they're gonna pass it along to their individuals is probably high.
A permit fee.
It's voodoo economics, right?
But if the money's there, if, if, if they're already charging money, then they should have the money in their account to give some over to the town.
I just think before you start agreeing to charge more fees that are gonna go to the parents, you have to think about where it's gonna end up again, which is the lapse of the parents.
Right, but Mike, I think if you don't introduce like what I would call a permit fee to help sustain this, this beautiful, I mean, it's beautiful right now. And, and the well is eventually gonna run dry as far as CPA funds and other such things.
Right.
To keep maintaining, and if we didn't have all that to keep dipping into, it would still be a lot of a dust ball. So I think that some permit fee per team and make sure that the team is not subcontracting. I think Ed's point that an outside entity should have to come directly here and pay perhaps a higher fee to use our fields so that we can make sure that these bathrooms and everything are clean.
I'm okay with the out-of-town people paying a fee because they're not town people.
But all these.
But we also sold dirt and everything else from the pines that should be part of the maintenance that's going back down there, right?
Where's that money?
Right, but that money's gonna run out eventually if we're not replenishing.
I agree, that money's gonna run out, but instead of going to every parent and saying, every kid's gonna be excised five or ten dollars. I would rather the fees, it's eventually gonna trickle down to the parents, it always gets down to the parents. I would rather pay the fee that I know is associated with the sport, for this case it's two hundred dollars per football, and then have them come to me and say, look, the town pays for the lights, the town pays for this, do you mind donating extra money to help recur that cost? And I would say yes, because I'm in a position that I can do that, not everybody can do that.
But, but the point, you brought up a good point, which I never thought of, if they're charging your child two hundred dollars to be on a team, then where's all those two hundred dollars for all those kids going? I know the, I give it back to us, part of it, to help us for the fields and the bag, no. So why don't we do that here?
Because you don't know, again, you don't know, but you gotta rent the equipment, you gotta pay for the buses, you gotta pay for the equipment, you gotta pay for this, you gotta pay for that, those fees add up. So, I mean, are they making?
For the baseball?
I don't know for baseball, but are they making forty ki, forty dollars per kids in profit?
All, all I know Mike is when my kids were on hockey, we paid a fee and it covered the ice and everything else included, and I thought that was fair. Why should this town have to pay for youth hockey, you know? And I don't think you should ask the taxpayers to pay all the freight for the youth sports down at the pines. The, the boat people have already been paying all these years, all these years paying a very small fee. And I think that to come up with, I don't wanna have to charge each kid, I don't like that idea, but I think some type of a permit fee that goes back into that, to that revolving account to ensure that we consistently have a good amount of money. Especially if you decide that you wanna bring in a recreation position, that's another position, um, with benefits and everything else. So I think that you gotta look ahead and just realize that a permit fee is going to eventually make sure that this is maintained as beautiful as it is today.
So can we get a handle on how many different teams are down there, leagues are down there, can we get a handle on that?
I don't know how we will, if I'm not, if I don't know about it. Um, Ed, what was the group you said, I can't find them online.
Northeast Hurricanes.
Northeast Hurricanes, out of Salisbury, Nashua and Salem.
Okay, thank you.
And AAU Baseball, they are, they are, uh, they are a not pro, a nonprofit group, I looked them up and they're registered with the state of Massachusetts, it's a nonprofit.
So we can talk about this all night, but do we, do we wanna try and get a handle on who's down there and we have this discussion next meeting again, try to get a.
We have the softball side too, I mean, we just know part of the baseball side, we don't know the softball side at all. I, I'm with Selectman Woods, no matter what you do, the fee is always gonna trickle down to the parents.
Oh, I agree, I'm, I'm not saying.
But there's a big difference between, say, Kentucky Babe Ruth, which is predominantly Kentucky kids, and some of the other groups, American Legion Baseball, probably not predominantly Kentucky kids. AAU Baseball, probably not predominantly Kentucky kids. Kentucky Youth Football, in the last couple of years, I understand their roster, mostly not predominantly Kentucky kids. Those softball, I'm not sure what kind of, uh, tournament teams or tournament games or tournament, uh, things they have down there, they're probably not predominantly Kentucky kids. Those are the people we ought to target. Um, I know AAU, these, these parents are paying thousands, not a couple of hundred dollars to pay, thousands to play, to sign up their children for a year. Um, they may be a nonprofit, but so is Harvard.
Right, but my concern there is, are they paying to use our fields and it's just not coming to the town of Groveland? That's my concern, is does someone subleasing our fields?
Well, this is why, this is why the whole discussion i- is coming about, and this is why I kinda brought it up. Because I, I'm seeing, I'm observing this day after day all year long and I'm saying, there's a lot of use down there and I don't think we're getting our fair share back. Um, even with the Kentucky school system, if they don't wanna put up money, there should be some kind of, of labor equity trade, some kind of, you know.
So to get this under control, okay? Number one, Denise is a finance director, she's not the person that should be doing this kind of a job. And it's not gonna be resolved tomorrow by, we can't go hire someone, so how do we start this process without adding more work to her? By saying, can you go find out all the teams that are down there playing and what they're doing? Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I get, I get what everyone's saying, everyone has a different opinion to this whole thing, but it really stems back to, if there was a person down there running it and there was a person down there in charge of it. We would now, wouldn't be having this conversation because we'd be knowing, he would know, she would know, that, that, that field's being used and the cost and everything else. I mean, that's just my opinion.
So you're looking with that individual to also schedule the fields?
Everything.
And who's gonna be using them?
Everything.
Yeah, and there should be a, uh, there should be a fee, uh, if you're using the lights or you're not using the lights.
Absolutely. I know I had to use the lights at fall ball last year because every day I would run into the problem with diminishing light as opposed to the spring where it increased. And I, I, I believe I wrote Denise a check for fifty dollars for the use of the lights that night, because I thought that's, it's fair.
Well, I think this is a pretty complex conversation.
It was fair for you to do it, not to charge everybody else. But I mean, I know what you're saying.
I collected two bucks from every kid.
Well, yeah, and then they could use the bathroom because you took like two bucks.
That's true, we could've had a cleanup on the bathroom.
Alright, well. All right. Well, I think we're gonna have to move on because I don't think we're gonna, we can stay here all night. We're not gonna get to the end of story.
Right.
Other than we try to get a handle on who's using it and who's not using it. I mean, does anyone have anything else?
That makes sense, this who's using it, who's not, who's, you know, with the differentiation between in-town, mainly in-town, versus outside, which could bring money into the town. That makes some sense.
And who may be profiting on it.
Okay. I guess moving on. I guess, are you good with that, Denise? You look like you're aggravated.
No, I'm just aggravated at the fact that someone else is using our fields, that we don't have. I mean, I have to track down insurance information and so I have Pennsaukett Bay Ruths using those fields.
Well, the point, the point is, is if that's really happening, we need to put a stop to it. And we now need to say, whoever's permitting for that, we got, you're permitting, we need to stop it somehow.
No, I agree. But like you just said, who's gonna police it?
I understand. It's not your job. We really are missing a link again in another town of Groveland government. We're missing another link.
Could we, could we set a fee for the outside use tonight, maybe? Just so that if Denise is able to determine that an outside party wants these fields going through the summer, we'd at least have some kind of a fee there?
Well, I've denied every outside group because we don't have the ability because all the inside groups are requesting the usage.
But we now know that.
So they're subleasing.
But, I mean, but once you contact and find, tell them that that individual that wants to use them when they don't need them has to come to you, why don't we be prepared with a fee?
I missed the vote. I should've scheduled the field every day and collected.
You should've.
Subcontracting. Never thought of that.
You should've.
There you go.
I don't know how to, I don't even know the number to put on for a fee for an outside team. I wouldn't even know.
I don't think you can even jump at that tonight. You gotta find out who's using the field.
We don't even know if there's outside teams.
And I don't know how we're gonna kick them off if they have schedules. I don't even know.
Well, we're not gonna kick them off. We're just gonna say, hey, you gotta pay.
But we don't know who they are.
Yeah, but it shouldn't be that difficult. I ran a fall ball program down there last fall. And I ran it through, Havel Senior Baseball, who ran it through Play Ball. I filled out the permit applications. I went and said, I need certificate of liability. I got you everything we needed. It was nice and easy. It was all above board. I didn't want total transparency. I don't know why other groups can't do the same. It's, it's not that difficult. It really wasn't.
Well, no, the other groups are doing the same, but then they're not yields. So everyone's giving me their insurance. I have permits from everybody. I have insurance from everybody. But now you're telling me that those aren't the people that are actually using the fields. So the insurance I have is useless unless they're gonna own the liability, that if something happens down there. So I will email tomorrow and follow up on this northeast Hurricanes stuff and at least get insurance from them. I found them on the website, yes.
Is there anyone else that anyone knows about?
The four leagues that are using it.
The person that has the most a lot of time, can you send them an email or a letter or something and say the board of selectmen are requesting, are you using it? I don't know how you word it.
Yeah, well.
Something.
Yeah, no, I will.
Or maybe just do a cover letter to everyone down there and say the board of selectmen have been noticing the fields have been used, a lot of out-of-town people, and they would like to know what your times are and what you're using. We'll start there with it and.
Yeah, I'll email, I'll email this one group, but then I'll send an email to everybody.
Okay, all right. Okay, so moving on. Oops, sorry.
Is the bathrooms in this discussion?
No. So the bathrooms, we purposely made a decision not to open the bathrooms last week because when, before I left for vacation, the police were in the middle of a murder investigation. I wasn't going over there telling them they needed to lock and unlock the bathrooms. I wasn't doing it. I told Bill. I wasn't having them do that. And we, the highway department was still working on light fixtures that were hanging inside the bathrooms. That has all been fixed. The plan was this morning, but Steve, our facilities guy, has the stomach bug.
Okay.
Until we have somebody, until we have people here. So right now, if Steve comes in, the plan is tomorrow. I've talked to the police today. They're all on board with it. The highway department, he's all good with everything. So the plan right now is tomorrow if Steve is in.
Quick question related to that, because I wasn't here when all this was designed and thought of. But when, when the group that was here envisioned the bathrooms, was there any thought of how it was gonna happen after they were built?
There was no, there was no thought of this board. This board said to Bob Aricalean, we want bathrooms. And that was, that was the end of it. He took it and ran with it. There was no discussion. There was no budget. There was no plan. There was no drawing. There was nothing. It was all, we want bathrooms, make it happen. And he said, I'll make it happen.
Who said make it happen?
The board said we want bathrooms.
Not this board?
Right, not this board. And he said, I'll make it happen.
And this previous board had no forethought on how they're gonna.
I thought how that all became about is when they went down there to do the roadway and do all that work down there.
Now I get it.
I thought that was part of that work was doing the bathrooms.
No, bathrooms were never on that plan. That came about by the board wanting bathrooms down there. After the Shanahan Field bathrooms went in, people were pushing for bathrooms here. And Bob said, I'll do it. And that's what came, no, there was never any discussion at all. Nothing about them.
Was there a vote by this board to vote to do that?
I don't remember if there was an actual vote. But this board met with Bob and it was like, we want bathrooms, and he said, I'll do it. And that's when he said, I can buy those containers, we can repurpose them. The board, the town didn't wanna spend money on hiring and building bathrooms. That was years ago. Yeah, they look, and they really look nice inside. They look really nice inside.
Never seen the inside. I wouldn't know.
It was locked. Couldn't see it.
All right, we gotta move on. So we have, the next item is the cricket club proposal.
So you guys wanted to have a discussion before I invited the folks in here.
Yeah, I'll start, I guess.
Go ahead.
So I talked to Hardy, who owns Jerry's. And he said that he's got a cricket club that's looking for a new place to play their games. He gave me a lot of information about how popular it is and the number of people that actually travel quite a far distance to play. I've actually watched several games while I've been overseas. It's kind of interesting, interesting to watch. I like the idea of having a new sport in town. I like the idea of somebody doing something with part of the land on Center Street. It'd be up to them to, I guess, address the field and make it up to the regulations as well as clean up after themselves. But unless I'm missing something, I don't see an issue with them or us permitting them land use down there to put a field in there and to use it and bring more residents or bring more people to town to hopefully better the establishments in town. Yeah?
So it depends, because it is tax exempt, it's tax exempt under the IRS requirement. So if there's gonna be any profits or any revenue made, then we have to go through bond council and have it done correctly. Which means that money's gonna have to come into the town, be set aside to pay off the debt that's being incurred on that.
Any profit, right?
Really, any money that's being made on the property.
So if they just come in, adjust the land to the specifications that they need and just play the games, then that doesn't require that?
Well, again, I think then we have to discuss where a car's gonna park, who's gonna maintain it, who's gonna do what. Is the town gonna get a fee? If the town gets a fee, we can use it to offset some of the costs there, but then it has to be used to offset the debt as well.
So are they, were they looking for a fee? Were they looking to pay a fee? They didn't want a place to play?
They're just looking for a place to play. But that's the starting point.
Right. And they would invest money to help to do their field?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what about bathrooms?
Well, we're gonna put in some fixed bathrooms and maybe ten years from now they'll be able to use them.
Yep, there you go.
And there will be quarter slots. And maybe by that time, there'll be electric dollar bills and you can put in there.
Okay.
But you make, at their expense, couldn't they do a porta potty or something?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm sure they'd have something. I was kidding with Mike.
I think the, the best thing is just to have a discussion here, see if it's something that the board wants to entertain and then have them come in at the next meeting and kinda give a proposal and answer some questions.
I like it. I thought it sounded like a fun sport.
I think it's interesting.
You know, one question I have, if you notice page one here, this, this court is under lights. And they're, they're talking about using the field from five-thirty to seven-thirty, book all weekends except the long weekend from third week of April through the second week of October. If they're going to seven-thirty in the second week of October, they're gonna need lights.
Yeah.
And are they expecting the town to put the lights up, or are they going to pay to have that done? That's a question that I have for them. And they're only, I don't know when, it doesn't list here when, when they're playing their game, but they list practices, weekday practices. But some of these cricket games go six hours. So they may be, I don't know what time they expect to be starting on a weekend, but that's the thing. Do they need lights?
So, did you have something, Kathy, you wanted to say?
Well, I'm just thinking that these are all the questions for them. I think, I remember reading through their packet, and it sounded to me like they're planning to come in here without asking us for any money whatsoever, and they will set up what they need. And then people will come and watch it so that all we need to really be concerned about is Denise's point. If there's a fee that, but if the fee can, any fee can be used towards offsetting the bond payment, that's a double win.
So.
And then just the parking issue. But again, there's so much barren land there. I can't imagine, you can't park the car somewhere.
And they do, they do mention in their proposal that they'll, they'll pick up the cost for a porta potty for their.
Oh, okay.
The, the thing is, is if we're looking to try, to try and see if we wanna bring them in next meeting, I will say I'm on board with it. I'm willing to have them come in and listen to me. We can listen to them. Anyone else wanna put your two cents in? Fine. But I'm, I'm on.
I'm on board with them.
So there's three?
Bring them in.
Okay, all right. So that, we're good to go. So you wanna set that up to have them come in?
Yeah, I'll go talk to you tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll have them email you, Denise, I guess. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So, moving on, we have the fiscal two thousand nineteen year-end transfers.
Do you want a motion for, before discussion? I can move it and you can second it and then discuss.
On the fiscal nineteen?
Yeah. So I was just gonna move the transfer of fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars from the accounts listed on the summary and transferred to each of their respective accounts, again, that are listed on this summary, also totaling fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars to close out the fiscal two thousand nineteen, right? Yes. And that's my motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Yes. Will there be another transfer here at some point?
No.
No, this is it?
This should be it.
All right. So we have votes of the board, approval of the fire department surplus list.
Yes.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we declare twenty-five stock, four-point-five self-contained breathing apparatus surplus as well as eight thirty-minute air bottles and one fuelered packet office jet, twenty-one-ten printer surplus.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone? Is this stuff all junk?
Yes. So if you recall, we had a grant for new breathing apparatus. So part of that was the company would come in and take the old stuff out. The board just has to declare it surplus so we can get rid of it. But yes, there's, there's no value to these.
All in favor? Okay. Selectmen's time of reports. Starting with Kathy.
Thank you to Bill O'Neil for summarizing this. And is this the, this will give, for the capital history, it's, this is all the borrowing? So these totals at the bottom are just total amounts of.
You didn't get a copy? Yeah.
Oh, here.
No, I just, I need one for the final record. Is there another copy?
Did I give you a picture right there?
I can get another one.
That's all. You can, you're talking about, I just need something before I leave.
Take mine. I don't need it.
I'll email it.
He'll email it. I just need to keep it with the documents if you're talking about.
So this shows like the total amount of money spent over ten years. Is that what I'm understanding then?
This summarizes by year.
Right.
In the column, and then by category in a row.
Great. Okay, so, but it doesn't show us any annual total payments that we're, that we're making on capital at this point. Which, we don't have much, right?
Well, that's just a spreadsheet. All they did was put in the, in the format that I can read.
Yeah, we don't have much yet. Yeah, no, I'm just looking forward ahead to the next phase, which will be to start to see how much we can afford capitalized. So that, I really like this. Thank you very much for doing that. So, and I already said I would bring in the project list. The only other thing I wanted to ask my fellow board members about was that when the highway superintendent, that's the correct title right now?
Yes.
When he came before us, I had asked when I saw he was on the agenda if he was bringing something, if I could've seen it before the meeting, but Denise didn't have it. So I got that, that list that very night. And when I look through it now, I see that these bullet items, many of these can't be done this year because they would require buying something. So I'm wondering if we need to revisit this with him and kinda separate it into what are your short-term goals this year? And then, and what are you looking, separate it into short-term and long-term? So it makes a little more sense to me. I don't see what he's working on this year.
Well, the way I took out of that meeting was this was his wish list over the next two to five years is what, that's how I took that.
But what is this year on this list?
He didn't actually give us something for this year.
I don't think he could because it was already.
And he, he didn't, he, this is his first year working under, he was, you're right. He was working up until July under the past highway commissioner's budget. Until July, he was his new budget, and he needed to get a feel for what he had to work with.
So again, I mean, I guess what I'd like to see is what is he working on this year, right? Because he's on, he's on his probationary period, right?
That's what I said that night. That's what, that's the questions I was asking him that night.
Correct.
And you kinda said to me, well, this is the list right here. And I, and that's where I was going with him that night. I was, I was having that conversation with him, trying to find out what you're doing this year, what you're, where you're going with your work that you're doing now. And then it didn't go anywhere. So, I mean, I don't know. I mean, we can ask for something from him. I mean.
Well, I would like to see, you know, this, the short-term list and the long-term list.
I was trying to find out the projects he was gonna press forward with come July first, when his budget came due. But I don't know.
What can we request that? Should we request that then? Because this is not that, do you agree?
Nope, that's not that. That is a, that, that was a wish list that he had said to us, two to five-year wish list. That's all it was, was a wish list, which I said that night, we don't have to really worry about this right now because we don't have the money in the budget this year to do that. So I was trying to get from him what his plans were for this upcoming year.
Well, our number seven seems to be something of this year, but.
What's that?
This year's paving projects.
Yep.
So maybe we could ask for, maybe just an update in advan, give it to us in writing in advance of the meeting. What are you doing this year? And then meet with us to answer any questions. Because I, again, I was, I'm sorry if I cut.
Yep. So what we need to do is if we can send Rennie a letter from this board asking him his FYI budget, starting July first, I would, we, the board would like to know what his projects and plans are for the season.
And then you want him to come before the board? Is that what you said, Kathy?
Well, yes, after, but I'd like to get that, I don't want the plan given to me at the moment that we're trying to read it.
So we get the plan and we'll read it.
So we'll get the plan, then you'll schedule him to come in?
Then we'll schedule him to come in.
Thank you.
I will ask him.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Do we need to vote this pay list?
No.
Because it's just the two percent.
It's just the two percent. You, the board already voted to give everyone two percent.
So again, maybe a future agenda, we talked about when we were going out to re-advertise for the fire chief position, having to have had, add more additional funding to it. And to that end, it is, this board deals with the finances of each department, as I understand it, their budget and their pay rates and all that. And I would suggest that the company report line item in the, in the fire department budget should have a flat rate as opposed to some people getting thirty dollars an hour to do something and other people getting less. And I would also, I also wonder if.
Kathy, you talking training or company reporting?
Company report right now. But when I look at these rates, I'm wondering if they don't include the steps. They don't. They don't, when I say the steps, they don't include the one-dollar add-ons for your certifications. These are not really the rates, I don't think. They, I know they're not the rates. These are not the actual rates that are on the payroll. These are simply the base rate with two percent at, or two and a half, whatever we voted. And then what gets added on, I'd like to see what's added on after that, before I vote. I wanna see the additional educational years of service, whatever else they're adding on to these rates. I wanna see the pay rate that's going into payroll. These are not those rates.
Right, but you're not voting on those. Those have already been voted on. This is just the two percent added to the current rates.
Right. But I would like to have that information.
That's fine, but you're not voting on it. So I can ask for an updated spreadsheet, but it's not thing this board votes on.
But can we suggest a flat train, a flat rate for company report and a flat rate for training so that those costs are a little more standardized? They all go to the same training session, and yet some people earn seventeen dollars an hour and other people are earning thirty dollars an hour. Company report is not a fire call or an EM, our EMS call, it's, it's like paperwork.
Is that us to do that, or is that the chief? Do we set their rates?
You set their rates, but you've already set their rates, if you recall, when he came in and did the.
The next fiscal budget. This would be next, the next fiscal budget that we could talk-
I mean, you could recommend it to whoever's side.
Why don't we have them come in and just explain?
Make a recommendation on it.
Sure.
But you understand that those rates are also based upon rank.
I do.
And so, some of those that are higher rate-
Teaching the class should get more than the guy learning the class.
Teaching the class I could understand, but if everybody's sitting in the same class, right? Like as a teacher, I teach and I get my salary based on how many years I've been there, et cetera, et cetera. But if I say, okay, I'm going to help do some of the after-school tutoring, we all get paid the same rate whether we've been there 20 years or five years or one year. It's a flat rate. And I'm just wondering when would, that that would work out better.
Why don't we set it up to have them come in and we'll discuss it?
With the interim chief or are you going to wait for a new chief? I heard both.
Well, why not discuss it with the interim and see what the response is? I'm curious.
Okay. Is that good, everybody?
I'm still cloudy on what the subject matter is.
So, if you had, if you had all the firemen in training?
Yeah.
In the, in the captain gets X amount of dollars, 30. And the couple guys underneath might get 20, 10, 9, 18, whatever it is. Kathy's saying when they go to the training, they should get a flat rate. Maybe the person teaching the class would get a little bit more, but the person, the rest of them would get a flat rate.
Right, we're paying an hourly rate for training versus a flat rate.
Right, and the hourly rate reflects all their credentials that they use when they go to the calls, you know, with the training. And maybe a new person might prefer that because they're only getting like 16 or 17 bucks an hour. They could get maybe 23, 24 if you set a flat rate. Standardize it, it would be easier to run the payroll for training, that's for sure. And the same for company report because it's not a fire call. It's just, I don't know quite what it is. It might be doing paperwork or running errands, I don't know.
Yeah, but to Selectman Watson's point, and I think he made a very good point, is, you know, some of these people have years of experience and rank behind them and they can add more value to some of these classes that a green rookie would be able to. And I think that's, you're paying for that kind of experience and knowledge that you're not paying for.
Okay, well, then if the company report that's not fire-related, give it to the, to the less expensive. I'm saying we have to somewhere move money around in that budget. And I mean, we never, we now pay them for training, which I think is fair. We didn't used to years and years ago when people joined. They didn't get paid for training. And I agree, we should pay them for training. I just feel that it should be some kind of a standardized flat rate so that we have some control over how much money to budget for training. If you had a flat rate, you could take the number of people in the department very easily, multiply it by how many trainings there are in a year and you'd know how much to budget. Whereas the fire calls, I understand, you know, you, we can't, we have to set it high so we have enough money.
You must have a copy of the budget there. Did he, how close was he to his budget?
He was only over $100 in the training line. I'm sorry, not the training inspectors, inspections.
So, they, so they must have moved them around from another count?
I'm not sure this year what took place because I think some things-
So, do we want to, do we want to wait to have the new chief take this on? Or do we, does the board want to have the interim chief come in and discuss this with us?
I vote new chief.
I vote new chief.
I think new chief too because he may have a completely different perspective based on his experience and he has a new job than we do.
Right.
And just so that, you know, for one, we're going to need to move money within that budget to fund that position though. That needs to be, I don't, I don't want to be hiding that from the public and the department.
But didn't we last meeting, didn't last meeting we say this, we're going to be okay with that? Because I brought that up.
Oh, I think we will be okay with it financially.
It depends when-
When you hire.
It depends when we hire.
Right.
And it depends, right. And then next year we will have to find the additional funds to add to that salary line for a full year.
We possibly may have to.
You put that out again and any responses?
I just posted it today. So, it's back out. I submitted it to Mass Municipal's website. It's on our website and it's out front on the message.
And what will be, 10, 10 days?
No, for these types of positions, we usually do 30 days. So, it's August 2nd, I think. I think I went to August 2nd for preference.
Why wouldn't you do, why wouldn't you do open till Friday?
It is, but preference by August 2nd so we could start scheduling interviews until filled.
Do you have any else, Kathy, other than that item?
No, I brought up the Capitol and I brought up the other, the highway department. Let me just look at my first page. Let me write down what I thought I- Oh, one last little thing quickly. Can we schedule, can we, do we need to post for 5:30 at our next meeting? I would like to go to two town buildings before our meeting, if that's all right.
Sure. Someone's got to set it up.
Well, I made Ed in charge of that.
Well, I think you asked tonight for 23 School Street. They seem to say that would be fine.
Yeah, well, I'll just double check on it.
So, then just let me know which building so I can put it on the agenda when I post it. But she said two.
Want to just do one or do you want to hit the Washington and then-
Yeah, because you're going to be down with them anyway. They can get you in there.
I'll, let me find out if we get, what other building we can do.
Okay.
But what I'm saying, Ed, you're going to be dealing with that, the water, they'll get you in the Washington Street building because they have the keys to it anyway.
Why don't we do those two?
Okay.
Okay, that's it, Kathy?
That is it, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Ed. Anything for?
Nothing.
Okay, I'll go to Bill.
Selectman Simon's report?
Yep.
No, our meeting was postponed last month and our next meeting is until tomorrow, so I really like that report.
Mike?
Just one thing, still waiting for feedback from Senator Tarr's office regarding state EPA, FEDA EPA on the Valley Screw Building. So, I did send an email to them last week, I think. And if I don't hear from them in the next week or so, I'll call over there.
Okay.
You want the update on the line painting? August?
Of what year?
2030.
Okay. Are you good, Mike?
Yep.
All set?
Yep.
So, the only thing I have is Bill and I went down and put up some signs, four signs I had done at the Pines over the weekend. And I'm going to pick up, I was supposed to get four today, four more, but I just didn't have a chance to go over and pick them up. They're the hardback signs, so a lady couldn't take them in her car, so I need to go get them. Denise gave me tonight Trinity, finally came in with their money. And I also have one more sports, it's down there now, the sign that's there. They want to do it. So, we'll have another six to go up. So, it's moving along.
Is that money going into the maintenance of the fields account?
It's going into the revolving account we set up, yes.
Okay. And, okay.
I got a new sponsor for you.
Who's that?
Northeast Hurricanes.
Oh, there you go. I think that's it. It's getting late. So, moving on, old or unfinished business, start with Mike.
Yeah. Denise, any update on the town council questions about open lawsuits in the town?
No, yes and no. So, council, so there's one in particular that I was asked to look into, which is the Harris-Lack suit. So, town council has met, they've discussed some options. It's just a matter of trying to find time to speak with them. So, either they haven't been available or I haven't been available. So, I'm hoping this week to get in touch with them and present to you all some options on that suit.
Okay, yeah, either next meeting or meeting after me, whatever. And then I would like to request the chair to have a discussion on the CPA for the CPA account.
Okay.
For CPA process for-
For an agenda item?
Agenda item, please.
Okay, so Denise-
It doesn't have to be the next meeting if it's booked, but one of the-
Pertaining to what? You have a project?
No, I just want to have more understanding on the percentage that the taxpayers are paying, the percentage of what the state is kicking in, what monies are in each account for CPA, and then what it would take to have the town look at possibly reducing those rates.
So, you, you have that for an agenda item?
I do, yes. Sorry, what was the, what was the last one? The percentage from the town, the state and?
Percentage that each town household pays, the percentage that the state kicks back in, the percentage of funds for each of those separate CPA accounts.
Yeah, well, we have, yeah, okay.
And then the process for reducing that CPA tax.
Okay.
All right, Bill?
The only thing I have is I just, over the weekend, an umpire had severe-
I heard that, yeah.
Yeah, he kind of killed over in the heat. So, I just want to recognize the tremendous efforts of Groveland PD, Groveland Fire Department Rescue. They were there on the, I mean, promptly and got this fellow back to his senses. So, I just want to acknowledge the great work that they did in the, in the time and this as they answered the call in.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, Ed?
I don't have anything.
And Kathy?
This is all business.
All the unfinished business.
I think I do everything under selectman business.
Okay.
Could we just combine that or is there any reason why we can't just combine those?
No, because one's reports on stuff you're working on and one's report, one's old business on things that haven't been addressed or concluded yet.
Some of them sit on different committees that have office hours and stuff like that.
Spelled out in the Robert's Rules of Order, there should be a line item for unfinished business.
Well, I think the term old, old business or something like that isn't, the open meeting law is not too fond of that term. I mean, I think to put down ongoing projects and new agenda items under selectman time would be highly appropriate and, and that way we wouldn't have to, it is the selectman time. We're all talking and we're going back and forth, back and forth. We could just do one, run down the, down the aisle and be done with it. And I also thought that we should probably have the finance director speak before we do all this because sometimes whatever she has to say, we might need to talk about. That's all.
Do you have anything else other than that subject? Kathy, are you good? You all set, right?
I already did.
Okay. So, other items not reasonably anticipated at this time of posting?
Yes. So, as we mentioned at the last meeting, the ZBA needs a member to sit in on Wednesday night's hearing. They do not have confirmation of four members. They need four members in order to hear the application. They believe it will be a short meeting. It is on the, I can't recall the property. It's Fadi's proposed project for the drive-through window.
On Salem Street?
On Salem Street.
Did they clean up that lot?
Yes. So, it's Wednesday at 7:30. It may be at game time. You're not needed if their fourth member shows up, but they're down a member and they had to not have confirmation from all four.
Yeah, I'll do it if I can fly, you know, dial in while I'm flying over there.
Oh, you're not going to be around?
I'm not even going to be in the country.
This Wednesday night?
This Wednesday.
What time?
Can you?
7:30.
I don't know enough about zoning.
I'm not available.
I'm going to have to let you know tomorrow morning because-
Someone needs to be appointed tonight if someone hears the filling. Otherwise, I'm going to have to cancel that hearing. They need four to hear on these types of applications.
This is where the jeopardy meter comes in. I'd do it if I was local, but I'm not going to be here, so I'm out.
What time is it?
7:30.
All right, I'll step up to the plate. You know, I'm going to regret this, but okay. Somebody's got to do it, right?
Well, you don't have to. They just won't have enough members to move forward, so. They have asked if a board member could sit in for the night to help them meet their requirements.
But then progress stops. We, we, we've alienated, you know, a good business partner to the town, you know? 7:30 here?
It, it's in the back room.
Yeah, I ain't been in the building.
Yes, yes. I mean, I can certainly, I can give Rebecca your phone number if the fourth member shows up or she hears a confirmation, we can cancel you. But if someone's going to be appointed, it has to be appointed tonight for Wednesday.
That's agreeable to me.
So, if that works for you.
Okay. Motion to appoint Bill to the Board of Zoning, who went tonight.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Bill.[1610.51]